Call the meeting to order. It's six thirty on Monday, July the thirteenth. And this is the Committee of the Whole for Administration and Finance for the Township of Edersburg Cardinal for the month of July, the date being July the thirteenth. And I'm calling for the motion to approve the agenda. Does anyone have the motion, please?
Someone moved.
Uh, okay. You don't have paper?
No, second.
I have a move or in a second. Who goes in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And the third item on the agenda is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening?
None.
No disclosures noted. And the fourth item on the agenda is business arising from the previous committee meeting. And that would be the meeting that was held on June the eighth. Does anyone have any business arising from that meeting? Hearing none, I'm going to go on to item five on the agenda. And item five on the agenda is delegations and presentations. So we do have a presentation tonight by Mr. George and Mr. Hendricks. I'm going to introduce Mr. Hendricks first, and we all know Mr. Hendricks uh, from his participation on the Port of Johnstown Management Committee. And also, Mr. Hendricks is working with Bio-Industrial Innovation Canada. And as well, he sits on the Board of Directors of the Saint Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission. So in spite of the fact that he's been retired for a number of years from his previous position as the manager of InVista, uh, he finds himself busier than ever and not quite so much time for golfing as he would hope. So, Mr. Hendricks, I'm gonna let you introduce Mr. Ben George, if you would please. And then you're bringing us the results of the electrical study that we commissioned. Okay?
Okay, very good. Thanks, Pat. So just maybe a little bit of background. Uh, Bio-Industrial Innovation Canada started out in the Sarnia area. And they've been there for like over a decade. And they wanted to expand into Eastern Ontario. They felt that our region here, uh, the Saint Lawrence Corridor was an excellent second cluster region. Uh, and the managing director, Sandy Marshall, asked me if I would be the representative for Eastern Ontario, which I agreed to. And then, uh, that started in two thousand and eighteen. And then earlier this year, starting January, we opened an office in Brockville. So now we have Eastern Ontario Cluster with an office, and we hired Ben George. Ben is a master's chemical engineer and uh, he's from Waterloo. And his master's degree is from Montreal Polytechnique, right? So, uh, Ben started on January first, and shortly thereafter, we, uh, we had, Pat was interested in understanding the demand for electricity in the Johnstown Industrial Park. And asked us if we would take on the challenge of figuring out exactly what that demand looked like. So we've been trying to do that for the past few months. Uh, had some issues and challenges associated with COVID nineteen. But I think we've overcome that, and Ben has done, I think, a pretty good job of getting all the data together. And now we're gonna present that data to you. So without further ado, I'll pass you on to Ben.
Thanks for that intro, Joe. So, uh, like, uh, like Joe mentioned, uh, when I started, one of my first projects that I took on was to conduct a um, a study of the electrical consumption within the Johnstown Industrial Park with a view to, uh, giving the township of Edersburg Cardinal a recommendation as to, you know, how to approach Hydro One with what kind of peak power figures. Um, so, um, my first job was to determine the present consumption. And the second job, this second, second objective out of this project was to determine, uh, how much the companies are, the Johnstown Industrial Park uh, power consumption would increase in the five or ten year horizon, starting from, say, this date onwards. All right? So, uh, this is a satellite view of the industrial park. And these are a few of the companies. There's the, uh, the Giant Tiger. Let me just use my cursor. That's the Giant Tiger warehouse over here. Uh, Greenfield Global with the air-liqueed, uh, facility on their premises. This is the Prismin plant. This is the Prescott wastewater treatment plant. Uh, this is the daily dust control, uh, dump, salt dump, I guess you could say. This is the Port of Johnstown. Uh, that's, of course, this park's one of its most prominent features. And this is the new company, BVL, that is starting up operations within the park. And so, um, in this thirty-six, so, um, what I did was, uh, you, you all have the procedure, the methodology that I used to contact Hydro One. And, uh, they gave me, um, a, an RLE interval based on this, the smart meters that they installed at various companies. Uh, now, this greater than ninety-three percent figure is, like, basically, it's the electrical, electricity consumption within the park. Um, it's like about four companies that are the biggest consumers, and they constitute ninety-three percent of the electricals consumption within the park. Uh, and as we can see, uh, you know, we have a, about a fifteen megawatt max. If you, if we, if we consider that the smaller companies have about, like, a combined total of one megawatt peak consumption, um, then the total electrical consumption within the park is fifteen megawatt. Uh, and as we can see, um, so from twenty seventeen, you know, twenty seventeen, the consumption is relatively lower. And then it increases up in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And, you know, the patterns look roughly very similar. And, uh, and so the reason for the increase is, of course, the Giant Tiger Warehouse commenced full operations uh, around twenty eighteen, I would say, like, early twenty eighteen. Yep, I have nothing to add from this. Except that there are two anomalies, all right? So the first anomaly is in twenty seventeen. This anomaly came again from the, uh, from the Giant Tiger facility. This is a one-time event. It has not shown to, uh, repeat over twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And then, uh, in mid-November twenty nineteen, like last year, there was a huge increase in a certain facility, and that's why you have, well, not a huge increase, but you have the maximum, the highest, uh, power consumption within the park at this point. And so, um, Joe pulled this nicely chart together. This is the peak power consumption month over month across twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty nineteen. Uh, that should be figure two in your report, gentlemen. And so, uh, basically, you know, like, again, you know, from what we saw from the previous graph, you have this huge spike in peak power consumption. Uh, and, you know, between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, the peak power consumption looks very similar. Even the trends are, are, are very consistent with each other. And so, uh, it's a very good predictor of demand in the future, that, you know, like, any, uh, like, like, you know, just the pattern of consumption is gonna follow the pattern that we see in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. Okay. And so, this is a potato chart, uh, which I used to determine which was the largest electrical, largest power consumers. And, uh, what we can see is there is one company, Company D, which is like, which consumes about sixty percent of the power within the Johnstown Industrial Park, just one company. And the company after that, it uses about twenty percent of the power consumption. And the other two companies, A and B, are just very similar, uh, power consumption figures. Uh, and so, which brings us to our summary and recommendations. So the first key takeaway is that the current peak power consumption within the Johnstown Industrial Park is fifteen megawatts. Uh, this is, uh, this assumes an electrical demand of one megawatt for all companies that are not the largest, not the four largest electrical consumers. This is a very conservative amount. I think we can trust this. Um, and discussions with all, uh, with, with the companies that we contacted or actually got back to us, they projected a five to ten year demand, uh, increase of between fifteen to twenty-five percent for the entire park. And so we can expect that within ten years, the peak power consumption should be about eighteen megawatts. And any new entrance to this, to the industrial park will, of course, add to this number. And finally, since we saw companies C and D, which are responsible for more than seventy-five percent of the peak power within the park, these two, as we can expect, will be the primary drivers for electric demand even in the future. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Ben. Very concise. Um, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give members of the committee an opportunity to ask a few questions.
Sure.
And then I'll follow up a few of my own. So any starters here? Anybody? Captain Counselor Cameron?
Yes, uh, you were referring to, uh, as, as we look forward, uh, what would it take, uh, what size of industry coming into the industrial park? Would it need to, um, sort of put a tax on the existing, um, infrastructure?
Um, something like a...
Another Giant Tiger, another...
Another Greenfield, probably.
Another Greenfield, yeah.
Uh, Giant Tiger is, um, is not, like, say, a huge, uh...
They're pretty big.
Yeah, they're pretty low consumption, but like, say, another Prismin, another, uh, well, a Greenfield, another Greenfield would just double the, uh, power consumption.
Part of the intent of the study was to really understand the demand side of the electricity, so that you have the data required to go and talk to Hydro One and request better information around what their supply side would look like. And can they supply, for example, the eighteen megawatts that might be there over the next ten years? So really, Hydro One understands the infrastructure and what their power lines can deliver, okay? We can't measure that or determine that. We have to really get that from Hydro One. But the whole idea was, if we understood the demand, then we could question them around whether or not they can supply that demand.
Do you have any opinion on whether, uh, the facilities need an upgrade to get to that eighteen?
Well, I understand what the power lines, basically, the, as I understand it, the lines that go by there are the forty-four megawatt lines. They are the same lines that go by an old DuPont plant, the InVista plant. And at that location, they could deliver considerably more than that, okay? But the point is, what's the, what's all the demand along the way? And where do they run into kind of bottlenecks, okay? So if they're delivering out to InVista at a fairly high rate, but they have to go through Johnstown to get there, that could be a problem. And that's why they have to do their study. They, they, they're the only ones that can figure that out from the whole network, okay?
Did that not affect, uh, a year or so ago, where they, maybe two or three years ago, where it was, you know, they were having all sorts of power dips and other things happening with supply?
Well, I don't know about a year ago, like, I was retired at that time, yeah.
It's more than a year ago. And they upgraded a lot of the lines coming into Johnstown and that area.
Okay, that's possible. I'm not aware of that.
Yes, but I'll jump in here. That was not, that was not supply, that was quality of supply. That was, that was quality of service issues, not supply side issues. And there's a big difference there. And they were able to address a lot of the quality of service issues by rebuilding the line from Morseburg. Uh, are there any other questions here? I'll see if Tom, Deputy Mayor, hit his hand up.
Couple of, couple of short ones. Uh, thanks, Ben, for the presentation. Um, uh, during that, did we find out what, what the actual max, you know, Joe, you mentioned it as well, that what the max power that can be provided to the park on a, on a consistent basis is?
Um, that's what I was kinda saying before, is that's the supply side, right? What's the maximum that can be supplied? And really, the only way you can get that information is you gotta get it from Hydro One.
And they won't, uh, and they, at this point, they don't have that information for me. Um, and they very, they, they are almost outright told that this is very much a case where, you know, when you come, when the township goes to Hydro One's negotiations, they will have conducted their own more complex...
So, can I continue?
Yeah.
So we, this, this study basically showed us and confirmed to us what, you know, what that peak line, what that top line would be, so that when we go to Ontario Hydro to pitch them for increases or make sure that they have enough power for, uh, future tenants, um, that, that we have the power that, you know, an industry is looking for? I'd say, could you?
But I thi, I think that's right, okay? I think this data allows you to ask very specific question of Hydro One. So, for example, if there were a new tenant that wanted to locate in the Johnstown Industrial Park, and they told us that they consume peak power of ten megawatts, for example, well, then you could very quickly look at this data and say, well, you have to add that to eighteen. That gets you to twenty-eight, right?
Right.
Then you could go to Hydro One and say, we need twenty-eight megawatts of power supply within five years, or whatever it is that that company is gonna take. Then Hydro One can go off and tell you whether or not they can deliver that or not, right?
Right, that, that's more what I was, that's what I was asking. One last one is, um, uh, we do have an approved grow-up that, you know, isn't really functioning, at least I don't think it is at its full capacity yet. Um, uh, does this take into any consideration, or is this only what's actually being used, not what's forecasted, forecast for them to use?
We did not include the grow-up in that analysis. Where is that located, sorry?
The...
Bingo Hall.
Yeah, the...
The Bingo Hall. So we'd have, so that's an excellent example of the future potential that we could, we really should be asking them what their power demand would be.
And I mean, it's a high-use potential, I believe, but I'm not sure that it compares to high-use compared to like a Prismin or, you know, a Greenfield, that, that sort of thing. Just, just keeping that on the radar. Okay, good, thanks.
Well, they do, they do use a lot of light. And, but, but now they have much more efficient lighting than they're using.
Air conditioning, too, yeah, to keep the humidity.
Counselor Hunter, you want in here?
Uh, it's basically trying to go, uh, Hydro must have some idea of what their supply is, that they can supply right off the bat, but they have some, if they, they don't really, haven't really told us. But can they not give us some forward, Rob?
You can ask them. But my experience has been, I know that we have actually explored, uh, new, new facilities and so on, and co-gen units and so on at our maintenance plant. And we had to get into a formal agreement with Hydro One around the connection study, okay? So that they could come back to us and give us that information. And that took several months for them to pull that together, and it was, it's costly. So they can't just say, okay, we can do this, okay? Generally not. They need to do a study of some sort.
Well, I, I know, know a lot the way it went. On council, when we brought in some of these other businesses and we went through that, uh, thing. But, uh, I'm wondering now with, uh, our government that's in place now, and, uh, and we're open to grow business, if, if we can't some way leverage them. When you're trying to market, as you are trying to market our industrial sites here, it's kinda hard to market if you can't say to them, well, there's no problem. We've got twenty megawatts of hydro available in this region. If you wanna locate in Augusta Industrial Park, we've got there. If you wanna locate in Edersburg Industrial Park, we've got. We, we don't have to wait. Like when we're on before, when we're negotiating the quality control there and trying to get the height, the lightning arresters and stuff online and stuff like, was it just back for, wasn't a good process, eh?
No.
Mister, with, and I wonder if, with these studies and stuff, if we can't some way of putting some leverage on Hydro, just try to be a little more forthcoming to...
Of course, I can't promise anything for Hydro One. I can't tell you that they, they can't be a challenge to work with sometimes, okay?
Okay, so I'm just gonna put a little bit more context on this. Um, but first I wanted to ask Ben a question, because part of the assignment was to try to, um, squeeze out of the existing users what their potential plans were.
Yeah.
And I think, Ben, you found that to be a very difficult assignment insofar as they're keeping their cards very close to the vest and maybe not that forthcoming with you.
Right.
Can you tell me a little bit more about who actually did respond to you? And what could be the quality, your assessment of the quality of their responses?
Um, so the Port of Johnstown were very forthcoming. Um, um, like Robert Daly's obviously super helpful. And he was able to give a firm figure of about ten percent. Uh, Greenfield and Prismin kind of hummed and hawed, and they were like, you know, just put whatever uh, small figure that you said, that, that you want. I said ten percent, good. Uh, and you know what? That's literally it. Giant Tiger said that they do not have any plans at this point to expand. And so that fifteen to twenty-five percent increase figure that I put at the end of my presentation, uh, or, you know, right here, is just, you know, just my engineering caution, right? It's just, uh, a very conservative, and it gives a lot of room to expand as well.
Right. So I'll just put, I'm gonna put some more context to that, because there's a lot of things that are not being said. And they can't be said, and, and, and I'm not speaking on behalf of these companies, and I'm not gonna use any names while I'm talking. But I know that these two of them that are planning some fairly aggressive, uh, expansions in the next, maybe not five years, it might be more like seven to ten. Um, one of them is, is public. Uh, even though, uh, Giant Tiger may have said something different, we do know, and they have told us, that they intend to relocate their, um, their cold storage warehouse to their site. The other thing that they've told us, and repeatedly, is that they do intend to double the size of that distribution center by twenty twenty-six. The other thing that we know is happening is that, uh, and this is from our discussions with John Edwards, and we don't know that it's gonna go anyplace, but we know that, that as a, as the local manager of Prismin, he's very aggressively pursuing his company, which is international company. He's very aggressively pursuing them for a major expansion uh, in the, in the, in the, in the North American workplace, uh, North American marketplace. Uh, you've already mentioned the fact that the, um, grow-up operation, I mean, we don't know what stage they're at in their licensing program. We know that they haven't got their licenses yet. What they use for demand, I don't know. But what it all comes down to is this. We have to have a certain comfort level when we're pitching a prospect that we're gonna be able to supply something as basic as Hydro. And, um, we know from our discussions with them during the period of time when they had all the service interruptions, that the Johnst, the, the line that comes from Morseburg, the forty-four thousand volt line that comes from Morseburg, which meets the forty-four thousand volt line coming from Brockville, that they are reaching the capacity of those lines. They don't make any, any bones about that. There's already a plan in place, and I mentioned it to counsel here at a previous meeting, uh, that I was called to a meeting in Augusta, where they're building a plan to move a second forty-four thousand volt line from Brockville east along County Road twenty-six. That's through Maynard. The first phase of that line comes as far as County Road eighteen, I think it is. That's the road that goes to Merrickville. And I think, Joe, County Road eighteen is on the west side of the InVista plant, is it not? Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, what they're worried about is that they do not feel that they would have any capacity for something major there. So that's one, no, that's seven kilometers of new line, forty-four thousand volt line that will be built sometime within the next twelve to twenty months, twelve to twenty-four months. So that's gonna provide some stability on the west side. Doesn't provide us any help here on the east side. So, uh, now we're in a position, as, as Mr. Hendricks has mentioned, we have this study now. We can say to Ontario Hydro, and by the way, I have a, 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 there's, there's another background to this. In March, the, it's called the Independent Electricity Service Provider, I E S P, that's the name. They basically tell me that they're responsible for creating the, uh, infrastructure. They're the ones that are responsible for determining the needs. Now, they held a big meeting that was to be held in March in Kingston, got canceled at the last minute, was held virtually. And it was for the Independent Electricity Service Provider to determine the overall five to ten year needs for all of Eastern Ontario. There were a lot of people that attended from Ottawa area, uh, Smith Falls area. I did not attend because it went virtual, and I didn't think that I would be in the same language group as they, as they were in, so I didn't go. But on the Board of Directors for the Independent Electricity Service Provider, there's a, a good contact that wants this study, because they wanna know what our position is. Uh, because it will help them look at Eastern Ontario, uh, that is to say, along the Saint Lawrence, along the Saint Lawrence Corridor. So, this will fit exactly into the plans where we need it to be. And it will reinforce what Hydro already, I think, is beginning to sense, that there is developing here a shortage. The last thing that we want to have happen is for us to be faced with a pro, with a prospect who is prepared to make an investment in our township. And we're forced to say to them, I'm sorry, we can't supply ten megawatts of electricity. That's, we, we absolutely have to avoid. So, Ben, uh, and, and Mr. Hendricks, I really wanna thank you for putting this in our hands. And, uh, I think, uh, Ben, you've opened a few doors. Uh, I don't know whether they'll still keep talking to you or not, uh, and whether you've got some, uh, some contacts within Ontario Hydro that we can work. Uh, but I think the main thing is that we've got now something that's got some credibility, and it isn't just a couple of counselors beefing off because we don't think we have enough power. It's got some legitimacy behind it.
And thanks, Pat. And I will make a point that, uh, Ben has actually made some good contact with Hydro One. And that has actually helped us get the really good data for the four big companies that are in, in the industrial park. Uh, each of those, like that chart that you see there, each of those companies over that three-day, three-year period, there's twenty-six thousand data points for each company to give you some idea of how much data Hydro One sent over to Ben, so that we can analyze this.
So they're interested in our study.
Yeah, and they provided us with a lot of detailed data, so that we can analyze them, right?
Right. So one thing that, uh, you know, I mean, the, the report now is coming to council. And by the way, thank you to Bio, Bio-Industrial Innovation Canada. I believe that we're one of your first customers. And, uh, and so, thank you very much for putting this in our hands. And, uh, although it does, in fact, belong to council, I would urge you to make it as widely, uh, available as widely as you think will help our township. So feel free to be part of our team.
Okay. And we purposely kept the names of the companies out of the document to maintain their anonymity and their, you know, the data around their electrical consumption. Quite often, companies are sensitive around information like that getting out into the public, so we tried to do that.
Right. So are there any last questions here for either Mr. George or Mr. Hendricks before I final, thank them one final time? So anyway, okay then, no last questions. Thank you very much for coming, uh, even though briefly, to make disappearance and present the, present the report. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have promised all of the companies that participated in the study, we have promised them copies of it. And I've asked the C I O. to get a letter ready for me, and I'll hope to get them out of the office here in the next, before the end of this week, into their hands.
All right. Thank you.
So thanks again, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so now I'm moving on. And, uh, the item six, um, six A. on the agenda is the A M O. update, federal economic statement and initial analysis of Ontario August COVID nineteen recovery legislation. And I think basically that's the A M O. policy update, is it not? And I don't know to what extent that was updated with today's information. Uh, so I had asked to have the A M O. update provided to council. And, uh, I don't know, uh, Mr. C I O., is there anything that's come out of? is there anything that's come out of today's announcement that you can add? Only a very few hours since the premier's announcement.
Yes, I don't believe I've received anything from A M O since that announcement.
Okay. Thanks again, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
So this A M O policy update that you have in front of you has a fair number of things in it. Does anybody want to highlight any of it or anything that it means to them before I just mention a couple of points?
Just, I just, I'm just quite pleased because they, A M O give their comments to each section and that's, that's a good summary and good guide to go there.
Yeah, and needless to say, I mean, this is Minister Clarke's, basically, it's basically focused on Minister Clarke's bill that he put forward, I think, one day last week, I can't remember what D. But the whole, a lot of the focus is on that legislation, which is, which is omnibus legislation, it's going to change several bills. Go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, just in respect to the, you know, what's in the A M O document, it certainly looks, you know, that they've taken a lot of A M O comments and considerations when crafting, you know, the legislation and it certainly looks like it's going to streamline and make things easier and ultimately, I think, with some of the things put, some of the approval authority back in Ms. Polly's hands and I see that as good.
Yes, and I think A M O, in many of their comments all the way through, recognizes the fact that there is a response to the public input that the ministry received. So I'm just going to look at a couple of things here within the A M O document. And I'm looking first of all at page 18 of 78. And under the heading, Ontario Introduces COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act. And if you read that first paragraph, I'm really hoping that there are, and you've got to remember that this is in broad, general language, we haven't seen the actual text of the bill. I'm hoping that there may be something in there that will help us through any of the obstacles that we run across with our job site challenge. And we will be watching for that very carefully. Under the next heading, which is Municipal Function Finance, where they're talking about development charges and community benefit charges, we know that the community benefit charges are only going to apply when it's, I think, 10 units or five stories high. But there's big changes coming to the concept of development charges. And I know we don't have development charges in our township, but if you look at the list on the top, or excuse me, about the top half or top third of page 19, there's a whole list of services which are eligible to be covered with development charges. And maybe at some point, this council should give some consideration to introducing some form of development charges. And to that end, I put a note beside the third paragraph on the next page, page 20, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing will be hosting technical information sessions. Well, that's the CBC framework and not so much the development charge framework, but I guess my question is to the C I O, do we have people which attend these technical information sessions that A M O puts on?
Yes, yes, once we, once we receive that, depending on the applicability, we would typically have somebody on the webinar seminar.
To see what the possibilities are?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm looking then at the next heading, which is called Municipal Function Infrastructure Development Plus Environmental Assessment. And there are some changes coming there, most noticeable of which, I see the paragraph or the sentence that says, "The legislation also eliminates hearings of necessity under the Public Transportation Highway Improvement Act." So they're making changes that are significant. And again, I'm hoping that some of those changes they're making under the Environmental Assessment Act and through the guise of infrastructure development may also help us with the Ontario Job Site Challenge. And I take the very same comments to the page 21 of 78 where they talk about land use planning. I think there's a, there's a few things in there that may tend to provide us, may tend to provide us with some assistance now. So that's one of the reasons I had the package put in, I don't tend to belabor this. I urge the council, if there's any questions, to bring them forward or any ideas that you have or any specific questions that where you think we should ask the staff to gather additional detailed information. We should be, we should be on top of this right now. This is pretty important legislation that we're seeing here.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
What's the history behind the fact that we don't have any development charges?
The history behind it is that we, in various discussions that have taken place over the years, we've kind of felt that we have rather robust permit fees for building permits. We're going to adjust them, as you can see from this package, we're going to adjust them. But we avoided development charges for one, two or three reasons. Number one, we only have one sewer and water system in the township and that's in Cardinal, where we have both sewer and water. And both of those infrastructures have excess capacity available. So we didn't see a necessity, because at the time when development charges came along, first initiated, it was for sewer and water, roads and a couple of other really basic things. That list has been expanded, as I just pointed out. So we avoided development charges because, number one, we felt we'd remained a more competitive township and number two, we didn't at that point see the necessity.
Is there no sewer and water in Spencerville?
Beg pardon?
Spencerville has no sewer and water?
Has sewer only. Has a sewer system only with excess capacity available. Now, am I missing anything there, Melanie? Do you want to add anything to that or Dave? As to why we don't have them?
I'm sorry, I don't have the background in terms of the number of years working year at the township, so I really don't know the background as to why. But development charges really can only be used for growth. So you're correct in the sense if we already have some capacity, it would be, you know, you couldn't use that money unless it was for additional lines of sewer, water or roads.
So with regard to the industrial park, it's because of the relationship with Prescott and the water sewer aspect there that maybe, do they have charges?
I can't answer that question. Do you know, Mr. Sabre?
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that they do have development charges in the town of Prescott.
And what about, I mean, both you and the treasurer and the clerk go to, you know, county meetings where you sit with the other 10 townships. Can you give us some sort of an indication of how many of the 10 townships have development charges? Anybody can give us a hint there? North Bremble for sure, right?
Yeah.
Brockville. Yeah, they're not party United Counties.
I, I'm not sure, but I would probably say it's likely close to like a 50/50 split, maybe? If, yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe less than that, that would have development charges.
It might be interesting to, if you get a chance at some point, to just kind of do a little bit of a survey and see if we can get another, a little bit more of an in-depth answer. Anything else along this council?
I think along those lines over the years that I've sat on council here, as you said, councils were always afraid of stymieing on the building of new houses in the township by development charges. But I think if you look at the area around us right now, some of the areas that have the fastest and largest developments are the townships that have the largest development fees too. So I don't know, but what, maybe in our analyzing of the situation, we maybe were fear among them a little bit because people, developers were saying, oh, well, we don't want to pay $50,000 to, when we sever a lot, to have a lot of development fee, fees on it. But then when you look at the other townships that have it, it certainly hasn't seemed to slow down their building at all. Maybe raised a little ruckus for a while, but then the builders went right back building. So I don't know, I think it's maybe something down the road, the cost of our recreation facilities and our roads and equipment and stuff, maybe we should be looking at, I know it's been brought up to me over the last few years, but when we're doing a lot, having to build new, buy new equipment and stuff, the ones that have lived here all their lives, unless it's the third or fourth time we've had to pay for that, all these new ones move in and they just get what we've built for years, so.
But again, with development charges, they can only be used for certain specific purposes. Yeah.
Recreation, roads and bridges.
Yeah.
Well, it's a philosophical question is the way, reason I asked it, because if you, if you have a community and all of a sudden you increase it by 10, 20 homes, you're putting pressure on the social, on the community services that are provided to those additional 10, 20 homes. Over a period of years, there's upward pressure on the services provided by municipalities. So who pays for that, you know? The whole body pays for it at this point, if you don't have charge. You can recover some of it if you have development charges. So it is a philosophy, basically, more than.
Well, and your point is well taken because development charges apply to new builds. And so the guy that's moving into the township from Ottawa, buying the new house, he's actually participating in some of that capital cost.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so at some point, you know, I'd invite the staff, you may want to start by bringing us a kind of a survey of what's happening around the county and then including Brockville, Prescott and Ganon Oakway, what's happening with development charges in those places and maybe initiate another discussion at this table. So I'm going to turn now to 6B, which is the Cardinal Arena Walking Track. And as you know, I ask, I'll go back a step, as you know, we've been trying to get the walking track open for a number of weeks. I've had a number of calls and I know councillor Cameron's had a number of calls and I'm sure other councillors have as well. And I've always been giving the same answer, it's not included in stage two. The C I O has done an extensive research project to convince me and to document the fact that it's not included in stage two, but I asked them to put it on this agenda tonight because I wanted to make it part of the public record that we've been trying to get the walking track open, but it just at this point is not permitted. Now, whether that changed with the premier's announcement at 1 o'clock this afternoon, we don't know, it'll take staff to analyze that. But I think we've sent the message clearly to staff that we'd like to see that walking track open as quickly as possible. And I think I have consensus on that feeling, do I not, gentlemen?
Absolutely.
Around the table? Yes. So, Mr. C I O?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you can be happy that we, our plan is to have the walking track open Friday morning at 8:00 a.m.
Oh, how do we get that so fast? Perfect. Today's announcement.
Well, I've spent a lot of time preparing this to find out at 1:30 today that.
Oh.
The fitness activities do allow that to be open as part of stage three. So we'll get the, we'll have the protocols in place and have that open Friday morning along with the play structures and a few of those other areas.
And play structures too?
Yeah. So we'll.
And swimming pools?
No.
What was that?
I missed, heard him. I thought it said swimming pools too.
What time did you say on Friday? Eight o'clock?
For the walking track, it will, it will be Friday morning at 8:00 a.m. For the other structures, it'll be, it'll be sometime during Friday morning as staff make their way to those, to those areas.
Oh, that's great. That's great news and I appreciate hearing that.
I'll look after Mr. Hammond.
You can be the gentleman, you can be the one to call Mr. Hammond.
I'll do that.
He'll be waiting for your call tonight.
He'll get it tonight. Are there fans up there?
I'll let the C I O answer that, I don't know.
There, there, there are certainly circulation fans.
Aren't they allowed to be used? Are they allowed to be used? Have they been, it's been recommended that fans be not used in large facilities?
In large facilities? I haven't, I haven't got that yet, so.
I look at his announcement.
Councillor Hunter?
We give research and our walking track can be open, what is the, under the new regulations, can the arena be open?
So I'm going to, I'm going to say yes, but we're still, we're still researching to what, what degree and what, what level. I don't, I don't have, I don't have that answer. The walking track was a relatively easy one to, to answer from this afternoon till tonight, but we'll certainly, we're certainly looking at that.
My main question on is that, my question, like I know, our recreation director, I asked him once and he was hoping that maybe by mid-August that we could have ice in the one arena be open and he didn't know, everybody said it couldn't be open. But last night, my grandson and niece were skating in Ottawa. There's five arenas open in Ottawa, ice in them. So I'm just wondering what, how the clarification seems to be here, here, because Ottawa has always had a higher rate of infection than, than the Grandpa Manor has and their arenas are open and they're limited to 10 participants on the ice at one time. And one parent can't be in the ring, but they can be in the lobby watching with their mask on. The kids have to be dressed, fully dressed except for their skates when they come in. But I don't know where we stand in our arena. I know, I don't know why, why there shouldn't be a question if our recreation, recreation for mid-August to be able to open it up, why there shouldn't be any question. I think that just the case of opening it up would be strictly up to council, but we said go ahead and open it up.
Well, now that we know that they're open in other locations, I would think it's a question of, now, mind you, for Ottawa to be open, they have to have the approval of the Ottawa Health Unit, or what is called the Ottawa Health Unit. For us to be open, we would have to have a set of protocols that is, that is approved by our health unit. So go ahead.
One of the, one of the things, when I saw the posts about people being, you know, open and that sort of thing online, is the five, I think, that are open in Ottawa are privately owned facilities too. And I don't know why that's different than municipally owned facilities, but they're the Minto and the Centwood, right? So I services and I don't know why they're different than the rest, but that was one of the things that I was.
How do you make any money privately owned, right, with 10 people?
I know nothing about it, but anyway. Well, there's certainly no, people are only going to be up for the morning price now, so.
Okay, so again, you have another, another challenge on your hands.
There are a number of challenges to work through, but it appears, I would say, much more optimistic that the arenas can, can, can open and function reasonably well. But that's, that's the other, that's the other part of the equation that we have to, we have to try to figure out.
Okay. And one thing we know for sure is that the groupings have gone now from 10, groups of 10, to groups of 50 in indoor locations and groups of 100 in outdoor locations. So, you know, there are some changes loosening up here as well. Okay, so I'm about to move on unless there's an additional discussion. Okay, so I'm about to move on, unless there's an additional discussion here around this, but I think you helped us out there a big time. So now I'm at item number seven on the agenda, and the seven A is the second quarter bylaw report. And we have a information item in front of us here, and so what I'm gonna do is just bylaw, well, Rebecca's here to answer questions, so I'll just start around the table and start down here with councillor Dillaw. Any questions, councillor Dillaw? Questions or comments, councillor Dillaw?
Good report. I, I see we're really working at the clean yards. One thing, I don't know, this parking violation kinda came to my attention. We had twenty visits for one parking? Or is that twenty visits? Is that one?
Twenty different.
Or is that twenty different?
Work order one, one, seven on page forty-one of seventy-eight. Does that help you, Rebecca? Or is that twenty different parking areas?
So, through the chair, that indicates, I'll have to check with our bylaw officer, it does indicate that he visited that specific issue twenty times. Sometimes it does take that many, unfortunately, to gain compliance. As you can see, that one is still open, so we may be processing later on for that one.
Twenty visits?
Yes, unfortunately. It has gone to summons.
Okay.
So, it will be dealt with later on in the court as well. Unfortunately, it's not a one or two visit in certain cases. Sometimes it takes twenty, thirty, we try not to go that far, but it does happen.
Can I, can I dash for it if you, if, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind?
I see that it is the clean yards that we're being very successful on, very hard on, and garbage, which is nice to, to see on the work orders that are open, so. Tell our bylaw officer, job well done.
I will pass it along.
Hopefully we get the cardinal violation of the parking solved. But yeah, I'm, I'm very pleased with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I will, with councillor Dillaw, that the report is, is, is very good, just a couple of, a couple of items, well, just one item really, and then suggesting. On the very first, which would be our page number seven, or thirty-seven, the, the very, the, the second paragraph, in addition, starts with in addition, and then three quarters the way refers to, and twenty-eight waste collection cases. Could you explain to me what a waste collection case would be?
So, those are garbage bylaw violations.
Like people dumping and things like that?
Those ones would be more along the lines...
Putting out too early?
Putting out too early, putting out inappropriate materials, illegal dumping, things like that.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you for that. And my last point, and it's just a comment, but I'd like to see, if you go to page thirty-seven, it'd be, sorry, thirty-eight, where the chart, or the spreadsheet is there, and at the top of the spreadsheet, it says name, area, blah, 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 but you go to the next, and all the other sheets consequently, those headings disappear, or they're not there. If that could be corrected, I mean, the first, the first one or two pages after, it's not a problem, you can look back, but you get a little bit further down, it takes a lot to go back to, back to just what the headings are. If that, if those headings could be put on each page, that would, that would certainly help me, and, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Deputy Mayor?
I, I really have, I mean, I like seeing the, the clean yards, you know, the message is, is getting across, it obviously is needed to be repeated, but, but I think John's, you know, doing his, doing his job.
Councillor Hunter?
I'm just glad to see that under clean yards there, we seem to have a lot more letters than sent, sent out around Spencerville area, but I was receiving a lot of complaints of here, cheers. Glad to see you've been spending some time there, but, well, I recall that with law councillor Dillaw, when there were twenty visits to a place for, and then we're, we're gone to a summons now, but I really don't think we should be doing twenty visits, they had so many, I think there should be a summons. We should have twenty, twenty trips for paying to go to deliver the same message, or not getting the message out to five or six, I think it's time to start paying.
Give John credit, he's a very patient man. How patient I'd be up there.
How patient, I know what people would be.
Big problem is there, is, is that if we can gain compliance by means of being a nuisance to the people, which after twenty visits, he must be starting to be a nuisance, but if you can gain compliance by that mechanism, it beats doing an order and getting them into a courtroom, because we're not gonna get anybody in front of a judge before January or February. Courts have been closed for ages, tremendous backups, even though you have a September court date for a hearing, that's guaranteed gonna be remanded at first appearance, almost guaranteed there'll be a remand on a second appearance, you know, by the time you get three remands, you're into January. And once you lay that first charge, the, the person that you're working with has no incentives to talk to you at all anymore. So, it's a balancing act, and I think, Mr. Buffett? Buffett. I think he, he has to balance it, you know, it's, it's all right for us to sit here and say, geez, twenty visits is too much, I agree, but if you can get compliance, it's better than, it's better than being a promise of a courtroom.
Still ended up laying a summons.
Yeah, I know. Well, eventually everybody gets up.
I agree with you, it takes a long time, but if you never lay a, lay a summons, everybody starts to figure, well, he's just gonna keep coming, he's not gonna lay a summons anyway, so.
And then, one thing I wanna just clarify, while, while we're talking about that, if we lay a summons on somebody, and we get a court date, there's no reason that we can't really keep going back to them and saying, listen, you got a court date coming up, but if you do this, this, and this, we'll withdraw the charge. We can do that, can't we?
Through the chair, that is what our bylaw enforcement officer strives to do on many cases. For the twenty visits, it's not him going down every single day with this instance, it's him doing random patrols on his weekly drive, multiple days a week drive, and he's noted this issue each one of those times, or multiple times that he's drove through. It's not him getting a call from his home, driving down, right, that's the instance. So, he tracks it every time to justify his work as well.
Yeah.
And in this instance, it, it's probably happened more than twenty times, it's just that's what he's been called out for.
Yeah.
It, it's a, an issue case.
But we can withdraw a charge once issue...
We can, he has the ability to do that through the court system, and depending on what it is, and if we gain compliance, or if the person is willing to work towards compliance, then we can push off the court date or withdraw.
Yeah. Okay, going around, right around the table, Mr. Robertson and then Mr. Bradley.
The only question I had was on page forty-three of seventy-eight, was the same information not available, look at this spike in two thousand and twenty, was the same information not available, or not recorded, or is it a new system?
Through the chair, I took over this casework in February, mid-February twenty twenty, that's when I really pushed our bylaw enforcement officer to start utilizing our Citywide software in order to actually produce this report for you.
Okay.
So beforehand, it was just kinda here and there, information was put in, now we're almost fully using Citywide, so that's why I was able to produce this now, so it shows a big spike.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the data, I, that's all I've got to look at, is the data, but it looks to me like we're active, and we're making some progress. The twenty visits doesn't bother me a bit, I bet you any money, the guy promised to do better and all that stuff, and it never happened, so it looks like we have a diligent bylaw officer here, and I think he should be commended for the work he's doing.
Thank you very much. Well done. And, so I'm just gonna ask one or two questions, if I may, and I'm going to just turn my attention to page forty-two of seventy-eight, which is the summary page of overall number of work orders in prog, in progress. So, these are all the ones that have been created, and there's no closure yet, and I think the total is twenty-four work orders in progress. Now, some of them go back to twenty nineteen, and even some to twenty eighteen. So if I'm looking, for example, three or four up from the bottom, actually, it looks like six up from the bottom, is zero, one, fifty-one, Clean Yards, Spencervale, ten, that would be October the first, twenty eighteen, no phone calls, two emails, seven site visits, one notice, one order, and one summons. So, are we kind of waiting then for, on the result of the summons, is that why that one would be the way it is?
Without going into my system and identifying what work order one, five, one is, that's what I can assume, just based on my background knowledge on that one, it's, it's been an ongoing issue with that case. John has been working with site visits to try and talk to the property owner, and that has not gained compliance, so a summons has been ordered, and he does continue to monitor the situation.
Okay. Now, there's one that left me wondering, and that is the one on zero, eight, thirty-two, it's a Clean Yards, Johnstown, and the date is shown as one, sixteen, twenty, so I took that to be January sixteenth, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the one above it would be March the third?
Yes.
Well then, what would, there's one here, oh, here it is here, one, two, two, nine, the fourth from the top, seven, twenty-two, seven, two, twenty, which would be...
Seven.
Seven would be July.
So, through the chair, I extract this shortly after our bylaw officer has input all the information for the end of the quarter. Unfortunately, I can't do that all the time, right on the thirtieth day of June, so I had to extract it once he completed his work orders for the end of day, June thirtieth. So, unfortunately, this system has limitation, I can't limit within the, in progress work orders.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
So it shows things that are July second.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, any other discussion on this bylaw report? You're done, I'm about to move on to, on to item B, which is the second quarter building report, the good news report. And the CIO points out to me that Mr. Crawford's not able to be here this evening. CIO will take any questions that center around the building report. And I'll start the other end of the table, Mr. Bradley.
No, I think it's, it looks good, the good news, as you say, and I don't have any specific questions. His last line talked about Tuttle Point issue, which I think most people are at least aware of.
Mr. Robertson?
I'm really surprised at the number of new houses, it's twelve this year, compared to only three in a period, period last year.
Yes, and I was, I was having some discussion with the clerk today, because in the, in the narrative that, that starts on page forty-five, it said, three, single residential units, and a semi-detached, that made five for the quarter, and the sheet shows four, but there's a difference between residential units and actual buildings, so I understand that, but I, I quite agree with you, twelve in the, in the half is pretty good. Any other observations, Mr. Robertson?
I think it looks great. It's really, quite an increase from the prior year, you know, in most of the, in most of the categories.
Okay, Mr. Hunter, councillor Hunter?
Well, we're doing pretty good in everything on your industry, don't seem to have much activity there this year, but the rest is looking pretty good. It looks good to see your housing units coming back where they used to be, and what I can see, driving around north into the township, there appears to be about five more lots that the entranceways are going in too, so I checked, we're probably gonna have five more buildings, and that's come fairly quickly, so.
Oh, is that right, a Hindman Road one?
No, there's...
Forty-four, right?
Four on right on forty-four.
Yeah, there is.
Another one down Hindman, and another one down our way that's entranceway can put in, so I think there's gonna be plenty more. Now, there's two lots that were, that were purchased, just going in, the County Road into Cardinal there, there on the west, west side there, that were sold and then given back and sold, sold, sold again, and the entranceways are into those, and the one there you can see is being cleared, so I would expect there's gonna be buildings there, or the people's van entranceways must be ready to, or they're gonna be putting buildings on them.
Well, so, any other observations? No? Deputy Mayor?
Uh, no, overall, I think a great, you know, really good report. The only thing that I, I came down to, and it's just, you know, below seven, you know, about the letters of non-compliance for, for Tuttle Point, I received a call from a resident today who was concerned about receiving one of the, the non-compliance letters, that, you know, has a couple of, you know, Amish buildings on, on site that are used for, for storage, they, they actually have permits from them, from our township, you know, they're awaiting a permit for dockside development and things like that, and, and they're trying to understand exactly how they're not in compliance, and what exactly the issue is, and they're, they're feeling a little perturbed, because they've done everything that, that isn't a, you know, response on their side to, to do things well. So, I didn't get a chance to talk to, to Dwayne today, to find out exactly what it, what it was, but, you know, just wanted to, you know, make a comment about the, the eight, eight letters, and exactly, you know, how we determine exactly what non-compliance is before, before we send those out, so, just an observation on that.
So, to the CIO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't, I, I don't have all the details with respect to what CBO Crawford had in, in advance of sending those out, but we'll certainly follow up with, with that concern.
Well, well, first of all, though, now, I'm, I'm just trying to see where, what the deputy mayor was referring to, are these letters that were sent to abandoned and vacant building bylaw people? Is that, are those the...
No, under, under seven, where it says, two, no replies, and then there's an also, so you're on page forty-five of seventy-eight.
Yeah.
And then, and then it says also, after seven, bullet point, two, no replies, there's an also to the report that says, eight letters of non-compliance regarding bunkies and mobile travel trailers have been sent to residents of Tuttle Point.
Okay, so a trailer at Tuttle Point is a non-compliance with the bylaw, and a bunkie that's being used as a, as a, as a housing unit is a non-compliance, if it's on a, if it's on a lot where there's already a house. And, and we have, we have screenshots from Kijiji advertising them as rental, weekend rentals.
Not to, not to eight separate units, eight separate residents, you have them from one, one resident who was advertising on Facebook Marketplace, not, not eight different residents, and you've targeted one resident who has, who has, or, excuse me, not you, bylaw has, of one resident who has permits for all of their, all of their buildings, they're using them in conformance with, with the permitted uses, and, and we've given them, given them a citation for that, and have a bit of an issue with that.
Well, all I have to do, though, is come back and say, in what manner am I non-compliant? If they're using it as a storage area?
Right, and, and, right, and so I'm making, I mean, it's, it's a, in finance meeting, we're talking about a report, and, and I'm saying that I have to talk to Dwayne about that, but I want it on the record that, that there is a resident... but I want it on the record that, that there is a resident who received one of those eight letters, who says that they're inconformant, and they, they have the permits, they're waiting more permits, and they're renovating other properties there, so.
Well, I mean, I guess the, the staff will look into that. But my understanding was that the building, oh, the chief building official had done inspections on all of the properties prior to the letters going out.
The CBO had attended the, uh, the, uh, Tuttle Point.
Yeah.
For sure.
So, I'm just, uh, on my, on my understanding of the fact that, that inspections were done prior to the letters going out, I, I was under the impression that he must have felt that it was justified to send the letter, for whatever reason. Uh, no, there may be extenuating circumstances that, and the letter that he sent out may end up, uh, causing that property owner, instead of complaining to a counselor, to come back to the building official that sent the letter and explain why they're in compliance. That's the whole purpose of the letters going out.
I think, uh, contrary to that, I'll, I'll make a slight argument on behalf of, of a neighbor. If, if three people on, on the same street own the same style of vehicle, and one of them is speeding around town and gets pulled over by a police officer, do they issue all the, the three people with the same vehicle a ticket? And tell them, you know, drive better, or do they just do it to the one who's, who's not complying with the law? I mean, if all, if all of the residents of Tuttle Point aren't complying with laws, then, then they should all get citations. Um, but those that are complying with our bylaw and doing things that they're supposed to be doing and have permits for permitted uses of, of accessory buildings, uh, they shouldn't be painted in the same, with the same brush as the one person who is advertising a bunkie permit on, on Tuttle Point. I mean, I completely agree with, with, uh, that person being non-compliant, but, you know, painting others, it's, I don't know. I don't think that they should have to prove they're innocent. Somebody should be proving that they're doing something wrong.
Uh, well, I mean, I don't wanna get into, I don't know the, the background of that specific complaint, so I don't wanna get into that.
Right, and, and ultimately, I don't either. I'm just saying that I do, I will talk to Dwayne about it and find out what the specific information on that property is.
Okay, are there any, oh, I'm not already around the table yet.
I have, I have no questions. That's a good report.
No, very happy, very, very happy. Okay. Well done. So I'm moving on then to, uh, item seven C, which is update for the building fee schedule review. And, uh, this, this, uh, report has a a, a fee schedule, uh, along with the existing or current fees beside it. Now, it's quite an exhaustive, uh, uh, set of changes. So I'll just, uh, need it up to council to raise any concerns that they may have, and, uh, Mr. Grant will try to answer them. And, uh, otherwise, Mr. Grant, I believe it's this fee schedule that we will use as our justification or as our background to the public meeting. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay. So we start, Counselor Cameron's first, and then I'll just take, I'll just go by show of hands on this one.
Yes, I, I just, I just like some clarification. Uh, on the proposed, uh, fee schedule, and, and we'll make it, make it very easy. Right on number two, where it says, uh, the proposed fee schedule is a base fee of ninety-five dollars, and then under that it says, zero, uh, point, or we'll say forty cents a square foot. Does that mean, am I reading this correctly and understanding it correctly? Ninety-five dollars base fee plus forty cents per square foot?
Uh, that, that is, that is my understanding.
That's all, that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, other questions with regard to this proposed fee schedule? This is go, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead. This is going to the public meeting first, though? Uh, yeah, my understanding is it goes to the public meeting first. Right, yes, thank you. Okay, any other questions here? Okay, here we're done, I'm gonna move on. And the next report is, uh, seven D, which is the second quarter treasury report with the modernization fund update. Now, is there, again, we had asked for this report. Oh, wait a minute now, there's more to this, to the building fee schedule than I've, than I've talked about. Because there's this, starting on page fifty-one, there's the report that goes to the public meeting as well, right?
Through the chair, that's just background information. They are provided to committee at previous meetings.
Okay, uh, okay, I see what you're saying. These, yeah, but these are the reports that are required to be made before we can get to the public meeting, are they not?
The annual reports is yes.
Okay, because one of the, one of the things that I believe has to be brought to the public meeting is the status or the status of the, uh, or the balances in the reserve account. Is, is that correct?
So, so, yeah, the, the, the concept or the idea is that there's rationale for, for the, the reason to have a proposed new fee schedule? If, if we're, if we're not achieving sort of a, a revenue neutral sort of fee.
Right. Okay, Counselor Cam?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I do have one other question. That regards, uh, building permits. Um, is it my understanding, or could I get some direction here, please? Uh, it's my understanding that if a person is planning of, uh, to build a house, let's say, and he takes out, he, he applies for the permit, but the work doesn't get started within the allotted time, and he renews that, he, he's able to renew the, the permit, is he charged an additional fee?
I think there's a renewal.
Um, so, so, yeah, through, through the chair, there would be, there would be a renewal, uh, charge of ninety-five dollars.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you, that's fine.
Okay, I guess one of the comments that I would make is that I'm, I'm glad to see the base fee, because, uh, for the, for the CBO to pick up a file and then go to the point of being ready to issue the building permit, and then the building, the, the person changes their mind and walks away. I mean, that's a, a, a waste of, of our, uh, of our, uh, of our time. Okay, uh, so I'm moving on then, unless there's more questions with regard to that. Is there a time, uh, for the, or have we established a time for the, uh, public meeting?
Mr. Chair, we, we, we have not established that, uh, the, the date for that public meeting. We will, we, we, we will look to potentially, um, we're, we're probably looking September. It seems like the summer months are extremely busy for, uh, for, for the contractors. And they're probably likely to, to, uh, want to, uh, attend that public meeting and provide potentially some, uh, feedback with respect to the proposed schedule.
Oh, okay, all right. Uh, so to be announced.
To, unfortunately, this, this time to be announced.
Okay, and so now I'm going to D, which is the second quarter treasury report. Now, is this the report of sixty-two of seventy-eight, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's just the, uh, the prior year March thirty-first, the current year June the thirtieth, prior year March the thirty-first, prior period March the thirty-first, in twenty-twenty still. And then current year twenty-twenty, June, and then prior year's June thirtieth, and then comparison. So this gives us a good snapshot compared to last year. Any observations here? Last, the treasurer, what are your observations?
Uh, yeah, I've actually modified this report. I showed this, uh, same format, um, in the first quarter by adding my notes and comments to the side for compare, from the comparisons of one year over next. Um, and, um, you know, the biggest thing, I guess, is tax receivable in March. We had two and a half million dollars owing at the end of March, and we're down to five hundred and sixty-one, um, in, in June. So we've received, you know, the bulk of our, uh, of our billings, um, for tw- for the, for twenty-twenty, which is really encouraging, um.
And even less than last year at this time?
Even less than last year this time. And basically, we, we were, um, we were on schedule to be better than last year. Um, so I'm quite encouraged that we're even better than what I anticipated, um, under the certain cer- under the, uh, circumstances, for sure. And nothing else is really modified too much, uh, differently from, from last quarter, last year, this year. Um, a little bit more in the bank, and that's as a result of not having to spend, uh, to pay the school boards their levies. Um, we pay those, uh, second quarter levies in September. So we do have a little bit, uh, extra in the bank, uh, at this time compared to last year.
Okay, any, I'm just, I'm just looking for a show of hands on this one before I go on. Okay, here we're done, I'm about to go on then. Uh, now, is the schedule of long-term debt, is that part of this report it is, is it not?
Yeah, the next schedule, um, so the main report gives you a summary, then each of the sub- the subsequent are kind of like a backup to that. So they'll show you the long-term debt and what, where we are after the, uh, second quarter of twenty-twenty. We also, uh, include a capital project status report, which, um, outlines where we are with expenditures, um, year-to-date compared to budget, with a few, uh, statuses with respect to, you know, whether the project is complete or whether we're, uh, or what status that particular project is. And then, uh, we have the reserve schedule, which is, uh, also a backup to the, uh, to the summary that's in the first page. Um, this showed all of your twenty-nineteen year-end adjustments, and then any of the in-year twenty-twenty adjustments or interest.
Okay, so, but if I could take you back to the capital project status report, because there is the, the third column there shows the value of the tender or the quote, and of course, the far-right column shows us the budget amount. But my, uh, issue is with the, um, the Blair Road, Judy Crescent, Hudson Crescent, Venter Road East, and Safford Road. We don't have amounts in there, but I thought that we did award these tenders, and that we do have numbers for them. So I don't see the numbers in here. I know that Judy Crescent and Judy Place were taken out, I'll speak to that later, and so not included, but for the other three, there's, the revised amounts don't seem to be available.
That's, that is correct. Um, the tender was awarded as a, as a single tender, but there was modify- modifications to the tender because of taking out some of the other projects. Um, and so, you know, that has had to been adjusted, and I haven't got those numbers from the, uh, Public Works Supervisor.
Okay, but do we have the numbers, so if I take the ones that are included, which is Blair Road South, uh, the budget was at sixty-two-five, and then Venter Road East, the budget was at two-sixty-three, and at Safford Road, the budget was at seventy-seven-five. So if I add those three numbers, I get a, I get a number, uh, that should compare with the contract price, should it not?
Quite possibly, I just don't have the breakdown of the new revised, uh, tender.
No, but they all have the total.
I, I have the total, but rather than put just the total in every area, then it's not beneficial to, to the committee. But I, but I will, I can certainly get the, uh, Road Superintendent to provide me with a breakdown of those.
Okay, because I wanna come back to, uh, to Judy, or Hudson Crescent, that later pointed the agenda. So are there any questions with this report as of this point?
Well, I just wanted, the treasurer has the total on, at hand?
Not with me tonight, no. But I, I do know that it was brought forward, and the, the tender was more than what was budgeted, so they modified the tender in order to make sure it was within budget. So I know that, that the modified budget, modified tender is within budget of the ones that are, are left. I just don't know how it's divided.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the breakdown, but I'm thinking of the total more. The total's gonna roughly match what's...
With the budget values.
Okay, Counselor Cameron?
Yeah, uh, my, my question...
Is that, uh, just, excuse me, did I, did I get to the end of your question? Sorry, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. My question is on the modernization, uh, summary, and am I to understand that we still have four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars of that fund to be available?
Uh, we, we have, we have spent a certain amount of the, um, of the monies that were, so for, for instance, the job site challenge, we've only spent about thirty thousand of the seventy-two-five.
Yes.
So, you know, we, I didn't take out the amount that we haven't yet spent, but, so I wouldn't say the four-seventy-eight is all, uh, available, because there is still some, uh, items that have been, uh, approved by council but have not actually been through the, through the GL, and the invoice hasn't been received.
Okay, do we have, okay, that's, that, 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 that's fine, but if I could just ask, uh, do you have a ballpark figure of how much money of that modernization is actually left available?
Well, uh, I wouldn't wanna guess in terms of the website, uh, RFP, 'cause we have not, uh, we, we don't know what that number's going to be, but that was, that was a per- a particular project that we were, uh, potentially anticipating using modernization for.
Yes.
So without knowing that number, it would be difficult to, to, to narrow it down, but...
Okay, okay, but we can expect another report as time goes on?
For sure, as, as we actually see some more expenditures being, this can be included as, uh, each quarter. We can include that, uh, this report, it's an ongoing.
That'll be fine, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions here? No, no other questions? Okay, uh, not hearing anybody slowing me down. Uh, I'm going to go on. I'll get my paperwork together. So I think then, that I'm at page, at seven E, which is the second quarter budget variance report. And, uh, there is a, there is a text explanation, and then we have the, the three charts, or the two charts, uh, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one. So this is open for discussion. Uh, I think I'll just go around the table again. Uh, duh, uh, uh, Counselor Dillawatt?
No, I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and so then Counselor Cameron?
I have, I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, same.
Uh, Counselor Hunter?
No, I think we're pretty well in track of most things.
Uh, Mr. Robertson? Mr. Bradley?
Uh, the only comment I have is that, um, this plague that we're going through is probably gonna throw curves at us when we come to do next, uh, year's budget, I would guess. If we try to use data from this year, it's, you know, it's kind of suspect in certain areas. But other than that, no, I don't have any comment?
Well, no, uh, so the CIO and the, and the treasurer are going to be disappointed because the, the majority of council members haven't given up their time. That gives the, uh, the chair a little bit broader scope. So I'm, I'm gonna have a few questions. And so the first questions that I'm gonna have, um, come on page sixty-nine of seven. And, uh, I'll pick up on Mr. Bradley's comments, of course. I, and I quite agree with him, there's, there's gonna be a lot of things when we come to do our twenty-twenty-one budget, where the twenty-twenty numbers are really not gonna be all that meaningful. But I'm looking at, uh, operating and capital expend- expenses, under the heading Department Operating Expenses, and I'm down at the one called Safety Devices. And I know that that is a category that probably has a lot of things in it, but I see that our budget for the year was thirty-eight-six, and we've only spent seven thousand. And so the question is, why, uh, why would the expenditure be so little, uh, this year-to-date compared to the thirteen that was spent last year-to-date this time?
Um, through the chair, I would suggest that potentially it could be timing of purchasing. Uh, I know a lot of the departments are holding off on purchasing things, um, with respect to cash flow, and, and, uh, if there isn't a need, they, they are not purchasing, um, unless there's a, s- an exact need. Um, that could be part of it, it could be just... That could be part of it, it could be just timing that the invoice that, you know, was supposed to hit in January during this quarter hasn't been processed yet. You know, there's lots of different reasons why there could be a variance there.
Okay, so the same, I guess, answers, and by the way, just to make it clear, I quite understand the fact that there's a bit of a slowdown on purchasing to see where we sit from a cash flow point of view. I understand that. But I guess the same answers then would apply to roadside maintenance. We haven't, well, actually, when compared to last year year-to-date, which was eleven thousand, we're actually overspent this year, well, overspent for this point in time. But relative to budget, we're less than, we're about a third, I guess. Two, and so then hardtop maintenance is about the same as last year at this point in time. And loosetop maintenance is about the same as last year at this point in time. Johnstown Water Wells, about the same. Sewer, storm sewer system, a little bit ahead. And then waste disposal, site transfer, about the same. I got them all marked Y. I don't know why I marked them Y. So then at the, on the next page, which is seventy of seventy-eight, I just compared the transfers into the reserve funds. And I went down through the ones called Administration, Fire Department, Public Works, Stormwater Management, Recreation. But I noticed that there were other transfers into reserve accounts. For example, there was a transfer of six thousand into the elect- election reserve, thirty-five hundred into the cemeteries reserve, forty thousand into the winter control reserves. Are they not a part of the same report, or how do they differentiate?
Yeah, through the chair, those are considered operating transfers. So they're built, they're built into the operating department, department operating expenditures. So under Administration, there would be the election reserve as well as, I believe, the server, there's four thousand dollars for a server. On cemeteries, the, the thirty-five hundred dollars that's there, that's the actual just transfer into the reserves of thirty-five hundred dollars. Planning also has an operating transfer of the five, five thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's in the operating budget?
Correct.
Okay, and transferred, the transfer has taken place?
The trans- all those transfers have taken place, but they're in part of the, of the, they're in part, in the operating department's expenditures, not the capital.
Okay, so, now I don't want you to think I'm picking holes, but just a differential here. So on this one called Administration, it shows forty thousand as the transfer in. But actually, on the reserve report, it shows forty-four.
Right, so four of it is operating, it's under for, for IT.
Yes.
Four thousand dollars, only forty of that is, is applicable to capital expenditures.
Oh, okay, I got you, okay.
So this section is really just capital transfers.
Okay, all right, so I can mark. All right, and a couple. Let's see, we spent twelve-hundred-and-eighty-two on ball diamonds compared to thirty-eight-hundred last year. We have no ball activity. Parks, it looks like in parks, we're, we've spent fifty-eight. I guess that would be a lot of grass cutting and that kind of thing compared to the seventy-two we spent last year. But I'm assuming that that would be part, basically park maintenance. Am I correct about that?
That would, that would be correct.
Know I'm getting some comments about that with all this dry weather, whether it's really necessary to do a lot of this cutting, grass cutting.
We have a desert.
May pardon?
We have a desert.
Yeah, well, my go-on is one. Johnstown's, Johnstown Pool and Daycamps, we've actually spent seventy-two, forty-two year-to-date, which is minimal compared to the nineteen we spent last year at this point in time. But what would we have spent that on? Because we didn't open the pool or the camps.
Insurance in both of those areas.
Oh, yes, insurance, thank you. And, and you say both of those areas, that's Cardinal Pool as well?
Correct.
And, now Cardinal Arena, so we've got three-fifty-one there and I realize we did operate it until, what?
March?
March seventeenth, something like that?
Yeah, so three-fifty-one, now, the interesting thing here is that in the first half of the year last year, which was up to June the thirtieth, we had spent four-thirty-three. This year, we've spent three-fifty-one, so that's actually about a hundred thousand, a little bit more than a hundred thousand, a hundred-twenty thousand dollar non-expenditure, if I can put it that way. A non-expenditure for that period of the year. Theoretically, that drops right to the bottom line as a non-expenditure, doesn't it?
Yes.
And, and we would have the same comment, well, Spencerville Arena, not quite the same situation. But now if we, if we determine that we're going to open, for example, the Cardinal Arena, that hundred-and-twenty thousand is basically a non-expenditure to this point in time, drops to the bottom line and we're in the second half of the year, really, then aren't we?
Correct.
Right, so we're working on a, sort of a, a fresh half, if I can put it that way. So we do have some money there. Now, if we go back to the pools, and I'd like to go back there for a reason. So I look at the thirty-eight that we spent last year compared to the five that we spent this year, which is basically insurance. So again, we have an, an under expenditure or a non-expenditure to this point, oh, about thirty-two thousand. Again, that drops right down. That's as of June the thirtieth, right? Yes, as of June the thirtieth, that drops right down. I hate to bring, keep bringing it up, but is that a service that we really should be looking at again? I mean, I know that some places have pools open. Been tremendous this last three or four weeks, I realize. It's not over yet, maybe it is, I don't know. Did you want to jump in here?
Sure, just to counter, I, I think Mel wanted to speak to, to an earlier point. And if she still wants to go, I'll give my ten seconds to her and then I'll come back after.
The only thing I wanted to bring up is that although we have reduced expenditures in the arenas and, and the pools and daycamps, we also had loss of revenue in that same.
We lost a what?
We had a loss of revenue in those three areas.
Yes, because all I'm comparing is to budget, they had.
You're only looking at the expenditure, you're not looking at the net of. So we did lose a fair amount of revenue in both not having the pools open or the daycamps open and, and closing the arena is about a ninety thousand dollar drop in revenue. It's fairly significant if you look at the revenue side of, of the recreational department. So although, yes, we've saved in expenditure, we probably are almost at a break even because what we lost in, in expenditures, we've also lost in revenue, so we're probably not.
So when I say that, that, that under expenditure drops to the bottom line, I'm wrong. I really am wrong because I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the whole picture. Yeah, no, that's, glad you stopped me.
It does go to the bottom line, but the revenue also goes to.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but it, it's not an accurate.
It's not evident, that's.
Yeah.
Sorry. My only, and, and while I, I want to see swimming lessons and, and aqua aerobics and, and those sort of things going on at, at our pools, again, you know, sometime. I just want to point out the, the amount of use at, at the area in which we're looking at spending a fair amount of money over the, you know, the coming years, being our riverfront, our waterfront, watching the amount of people that have used the, the new docks, just parking their car down there and getting their lawn chairs out again. Every time I drive by, I, I like to think that, you know, part of that is because our pools are closed. There's more kids swimming down there than ever, fishing off of the new docks. It's, we haven't seen that much use in, in that area in a long, long, long time. And, and I like to think that part of that is actually because, well, it's a tough year, but, but because the pools are closed.
Okay, so the need is being met?
I think it is, I really do.
And just, and just to follow up on, on that as well, they've actually created a new, a new beach down there, which is to the west side of Richardson's Point, which is the area where we set off the fireworks and they've taken the sand. They, they made it actually packed it down and made, made it into a beach and there's swimmers there every day.
Every day.
I have a little, I can go.
Yes.
Something coming up?
Sorry to steal your thunder?
No.
That was not my intention.
Your mom.
Once, once we got into stage two, I had two people stop at my house, ask where they can have a picnic. Because they drove down North Channel and nothing untuddled, of course. And so I directed them to the Cardinal Waterfront. And I said, you know, it's a great spot, you're. And it should be relatively easy to have social.
Yeah, exactly. Getting hard down there, I'll tell you, some days.
I told them, I'm not taking this.
Open, yeah, both sides, there's lots of.
You know, it's, it's great to see.
Yeah, it's great to see.
So.
Just to, yeah, I just was offering it, and I know, I know that your thoughts, and I get them totally, but I think, you know, by them having them closed is really furthering a project that we as council are, are supporting, which is the development of our riverfront.
Right.
So. I think also too, the Cardinal Waterfront is benefiting from our neighbors' beach being closed too.
Does still close on weekends? Still close on weekends?
Where?
Iroquois? Iroquois and Morse, right, they got an awful mess. And I mean, very, very, anyways. Yes. We just don't close up. So did you want in on this now? Because I'm just about winding up.
I know.
Much, much to the relief of the treasurer.
Councillor Inquires are noticeable.
But thank you very much. Okay, all right, well, it's a good report and I, I always appreciate numbers. And they, they tell us a lot about how we're doing. And so now I'm gonna go on to the next report, which I think will be seventy-two of seventy-eight, which is the final tax billing report, which is seven F on the agenda. So I'm gonna let you just talk to that report. But before you do, I just want to say that it's really eye-opening to me to get your earlier report, which compares our position on June the thirtieth last year with June the thirtieth this year. Very interesting, so go ahead, please.
So this report is provided to committee just to kind of give a sense of where, based on the information that I've been able to gain with respect to payments that have been received by the township and then also polling some of the other townships, just to suggest that our August billing should remain. I think, I think we're fortunate in our municipality that we haven't really seen the major effect to, to the COVID pandemic. And I, I put in last, second to last paragraph is Eastern Ontario Leadership Council information. And, and I would encourage all of the council members to go in and have a, have a look at their interactive dashboard. It, it, they were tasked to provide an analysis of where Eastern Ontario has been hit with respect to the pandemic compared to all of Ontario and even, I think, Fortinac County is also in there. And I listened in on one of the webinars that they had and, and it's quite interesting because I think our mix of, of businesses and, and industry is such that we're a little more resilient to, to these types of economic impacts. So that's, that's helped us. And I'm not, I'm not wanting to discount that there's probably some small businesses out there that may need our help. But I think for the most part, I think our, our residents are, have been, have shown that they have an ability to pay. We've, we've given them many options to pay and they're, and they're taking up those options. So I think we should stay the course for, for Mar- for Jan- for August thirty-first and then see where people are. If, if somebody really is having some issues, I'd rather see us look at something after the, after the, after the fact. And, and, you know, there are some of the other municipalities that I've looked at, they're looking at potential deferral issues, but for specifics. Maybe for a small business that really is, is struggling. You know, we, we maybe could look at that. But I think for the most part, I think, all indications say that our, our economy is pretty strong here in Leeds and Grenville and especially in Edwardsburg.
Now, the, the Eastern Ontario Leadership Council is a, a, a hive-off, if I can put it, from the Eastern Ontario Works Caucus. Do they, do they recognize that there are anomalies and that Edwardsburg Cardinal may be one of them? Do they recognize that?
You can see right through, to the different, you can only really see through the, through the Leeds and Grenville. I think you can actually drill right down to our municipality. And you can look at which sectors are, are impacted more so than others. And so they use, I think there's about ten or twelve different sectors. Of course, tourism is the biggest hit and, and retail. We don't have a lot of huge retail, so it's, the huge retail, I think, are the ones that are, are, are hit. Some of the smaller businesses are still being able to manage through, through the.
And, and my last week's column, I talked about our big industrial manufacturers and they've all managed to maintain operations and keep people employed and well over two thousand employees and all still working. So are there any other questions for the treasurer as a result of this report? I'm gonna just ask for a show of hands this time. Mr. Robertson?
You were saying that the big industries are, you know, going, going quite strong. But if you drive up Commerce Drive, for instance, there's a lot of the small ones in, in there that have, you know, that you don't see the, the same number of cars are in there as they were back prior to the.
No, 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 I realize that, but the big guys have, I mean, if you're talking about chi- the, the, the transportation company, I think they're all working from home.
Yeah.
You know, team industrial, I think they're still busy. But I was just concentrating on the four big, five big manufacturers. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, it's, it's related. I mean, you know, going around these days to as many small businesses that, that I can and trying to do like a small, you know, shop local campaign. You know, the one thing that I can say is that people were excited, you know, as shoppers and, and they, they couldn't wait to get back into their favorite local small businesses. They're making a greater effort to, to get back and to, to shop local and to support local. And I think even though, you know, our business was closed and, and we saw a, a huge decline in revenue, revenue that we're not going to make back, we also see, you know, a, a positive and, and, you know, an overwhelming show of support as we, as we move forward. So the, I would say the key is to make sure that we don't screw up phase three and that we keep everybody open. As long as that, that happens, I, I think that, you know, we'll find a way to make our taxes and be able to keep the deadlines that, that we have set.
Okay, so two takeaways from this. First of all, the, 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 the whole purpose of the report was to get, as I, as I believe, the purpose of the report was to gain consensus of council that we're not changing the August thirty-first deadline date. We have consensus on that, I believe. We have lots of reason for that. Okay, so that's the first thing and I, and the, and the minutes should reflect that. And then the second thing that I wanted to bring out was on page seventy-three of seventy-eight, where the treasurer points out the number of homes sold in that period, March the twentieth to June the twenty-second. Was there something magic about that particular period that Empac picked that period?
Empac did not pick that period, actually. That is myself digging through Empac's multiple listings that we, that we have gained access to. And I just thought it was very important for, to look at that data to find out, you know, what, what's gone on during this particular period of time, which is basically around the pandemic timeframe. And, and I thought it was, it was good to compare where, what was it like last year? And it, it's encouraging to see that we're actually better than we were last year during a period in time when we would have thought that, you know, we wouldn't see sales, that we, and, you know, but people can put their house up and within a week can sell their house at, at asking.
Yes.
That's the, an interesting figure, there's four more houses sold.
Yep.
And it's about, and they're at three, plus three million almost.
Yeah.
So, I mean, these are expensive homes.
These are not cheap homes.
So this is, so I, I, I think that that's a good news story for our township and that's the, the thrust of my column this week, I'll be circulating it the night after the meeting. Provided that I can get it, it passed the treasurer and the. Uh, provided that I can get, uh, uh, it, it passed the, uh, the treasurer and the, and the C A O's sharp eyes and that I didn't make any serious errors. Okay, so we're moving on, uh, to seven G, which is the new mandatory public sector accounting standards. Very interesting. This is just for your information. Uh, and so the first question was, um, do I get a certificate if I say that I understand this?
I'm hoping I get a certificate after all this webinars and workshops I've, I've grew into. I've done five workshops and have two more to come. Um, and it is a lot of information, uh, for sure. The, uh, the standards are, are pretty complicated and the five, uh, webinars that I've been in with just touched briefly on, on the basis of it and the two, uh, full day workshops will probably be more in-depth for sure. Um, but the auditors had provided that these, these two standards were going to be, uh, coming up in our statements and, uh, MFAO has provided, um, webinars and workshops in order to kind of get treasurers on board in terms of understanding, you know, how the statements are gonna have to change and it's, it's fairly impactful for sure.
Now, of course, these are standards that are set by the Public Sector Accounting Board.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, the seminars that you're, uh, attending are put on by Municipal, uh, Finance Officers Association. It's too bad because, and I don't know to what extent the Municipal Finance Officers Association has any communication or influence at all on the public sector, Stan, uh, P S A V, on the, uh, uh, public sector, uh, board. But it, it just bothers me to land that they're making, these are very significant changes that they're bringing about to P S, uh, on the P S A V standards. The thing that bothers me is they've missed what I consider to be one of the most important factors and that is that they have not yet reintroduced the concept of a balance sheet for municipal financing. We don't have a balance sheet yet, which is silly, that we've making these kind of changes without reintroducing a balance sheet. Because if nothing else, people can't understand a balance sheet. And the way we present ourself is certainly not by means of a balance sheet. But anyway, um, does anybody have any questions to the treasurer as, as to these new standards? I'm just gonna, we'll, we'll see this all unfold before our very eyes in the next year or so. Counselor Hunter?
I just don't, uh, I mean, you, I think you deserve a certi- certificate. You can understand all what they're trying to do here. Just over the years, uh, I've served on council, I don't know how many times they've upgraded and changed these systems and I don't see that we got any place. And I'm sure over all our municipalities, it's millions of dollars being spent to change all these things. And, and I don't see that it gets it any farther, had, had as far as municipality or anything goes than they were back when we had thirty-five or forty years ago, had a simple balance sheet statement that anybody in the township could pick up and understand where their township stood. This is just.
I know, but.
I think it's a, a system that's trying to confuse.
I know, but.
The great area that they have no idea where their township stands.
Well, except for one thing. The previous balance sheets were based on cash. But cash is only one asset of a municipality and buildings and roads and water plants and sewer plants, they're another major asset. I mean, slowly, slowly, we're starting to learn how to deal, deal with tangible capital assets and how to depreciate them and how to include them into our financial statements. It's been a hard hole, I agree with you, but there's no reason for not having a balance sheet where some of your assets appear in cash and other of your assets appear as, as valuations. I mean, you, that's the way we did.
I just don't see the, it's so hard to comprehend in these sheets when you're done where, where you are as a corporate.
Not arguing with you.
Incorporated balance sheet that we use in agriculture and stuff. We take in all depreciation and values and stuff too and, and I can take it in, lay it down in front of the bank manager, he can tell me right off, or we're going broke or wherever, uh, where, where we're here. I'll lend you another million dollars, so.
I'm disagreeing with you.
Well, we, we could ask the treasurer to produce one.
Well, the treasurer does produce one. You, you do the end, the year end, you, you, you compare expenses and revenues to budget.
Yep.
And avoid all that other crap.
And then translate it into P S A V.
Yeah.
I just noticed too, on page three of seventy-eight. They, they got talking about the, uh, financial statement and about a third of the way up from the bottom, it says whereas.
Page three of seventy-eight.
Page three of seventy-eight. It says whereas M N P, L L P, has subsequently released their unqualified audit. So I don't know what that means.
Unqualified audited opinion.
Opinion, yeah. So we're not really saying.
It's not, it's not, it's not valid. Uh, it's not, it's valid, but it's not, you don't go to the map with it.
I think it's.
What's that?
T B A.
Okay, all right, I'm not going there. All right, uh, so there's no other questions with this one, then I'm on, uh, seven H, which we're going to talk about County Road Two, project funding options, and I'm gonna let the C A O speak to this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you, you will recall that, uh, last, uh, last month, we, we, we were asked to bring some, uh, potential, uh, funding options for, for County Road Two. After, uh, unfortunately, once again, we were, uh, sort of declined, uh, the I C I P grant application. So, um, as, as you can look at under, under the financial implications, there's, there's, we, we've come up kind of with, uh, three sort of, um, options that, that may be available, which is, is complete the entire project in, in one, uh, um, sort of as, as, as one single project. Um, to complete the, the project in, in sections like, such as project A, B, and, and, and C. Um, with, uh, with some, some options with respect to, to sort of internal transfers, uh, from, from various reserves. And, and option three is sort of a capital levy user rate, uh, built in, uh, moving forward with sort of an example of, uh, of what, a five dollar a month, uh, capital levy charge would, would sort of generate in a, in, in, in a year. So, uh, the, the recommendation is to, to look at, um, uh, moving forward with the County Road Two project in, in sort of a, uh, a multiple project, uh, within, within the upcoming financial plan that, that looks at the next six years and to, to, to look at incorporating a capital levy with, with other funding options within that financial plan. So hopefully we're looking to see if there, if there's interest at, at, at committee and council to, to, to look at a capital levy.
Okay, and I guess the one concept that, a couple of comments that I'm gonna make before I open the floor for discussion here is that, yes, we've been turned down seven times, uh, but there's an old story that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. The more noise we make, the more nuisance we make of ourselves. Better the chance the next time. But the unfortunate problem is that the, the province is broke and so is the feds. They're all convinced. And I don't know what's gonna happen. But I guess my caution is this, about doing it all in one shot. If we can pick a specific project and it's from here to here, then any work that we do on that project, up until the time a new grant program comes along, cannot be financed. Because all grant programs will only finance projects that have not been started. So I always have to remember that if you start a project that's this big, even though it's got five components to it, if it's this big and you've started it here with component one, they will say to you, well, have you started the pro, has work begun? Yes. Gone. Your application doesn't mean anything. Because this is the project and you've got it started and half-finished, well, you can always say, oh, we're not applying for money for that project. We're applying for money for this project. So, yeah, so my caution to staff is we have to change our words here. We have to change our words. We have to change the way we're describing what we're doing. We don't want to use phase one or project A, project B, project C. We want to use a specific word name that applies just to this and a completely different word name that applies to this, in case other opportunities become available sometime. We'll get out of this hole that we're in probably in the next few years. And who knows, our system may hang together long enough that at some point along the line, we end up being able to, to get a grant for a piece of what's left. But you gotta start someplace. Now, having said all that, um, I guess it's up for discussion. You've got three options in front of you. Don't have to necessarily make a decision on one of those options tonight. I'd prefer not to. Uh, one of the reasons I prefer not to is because we've asked for a complete debriefing at the highest levels of why this year's application, where did it fail to meet the standard? We've asked for that. We haven't been granted it. It hasn't happened yet. But I would like to at least have that under my belt before I show my cards for the next round, if I can put it that way. So that's where I'm standing and I'll open the floor for discussion from there. Counselor. Yeah, on the fine, the option one, I just wanna know, I don't really understand. Which would cost each system eighty thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. You're telling me each user? It's on that street, eighty thousand?
One sewer.
Pardon me?
One water and one sewer.
Sewer side and the water side.
Would be eighty thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars?
Per year.
Per year.
Year.
For thirty years.
For thirty years?
Yeah.
Over and above operating costs?
That's, that's a dead option, uh.
Yeah.
Counselor.
Yeah.
Well, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the only P on, on this. So, Mr. Mayor, if you'd grant me the opportunity of going last, I would appreciate it.
Okay, but remember, the chair always comes last.
Hey, that's fine. That's fine. I can, I can.
Deputy Mayor.
Uh, I don't really, I don't really have a whole lot of comments on it, other than I'd really like to see exactly what or why we failed before we go and set any direction on, on doing anything. And I think that's all that I have to say. Yeah. I mean, obviously we have to do something at some point, but, but I'd like to know exactly where we failed before we set that.
Boy, we're gonna get nailed here if we don't.
Yeah.
Any up. Counselor Hunter.
Well, I, I think it's a great request to know where we stand, but having been involved in about five times and we've applied this, and I think as you recall, we've asked pretty well every time, why, why we got turned down. They've never told us, so it's just been, well, you get turned down. I think it's a lot of politics and they're not gonna tell you one way or another why you get turned, turned down. They know where they're invested, wanna invest their money, to, in my opinion, to the best of their credit, to them. I think we gotta do something pretty soon on, on this. Uh, one question I have, uh, to the chair, to our C A O. We're estimating, uh, or three million and something, for the total last year, three point three seven one million to do the whole project. I assume this three point three seven one million takes in the road construction and everything in, in that. So, being that this is on a county road, I would assume the county would have to come good for part of the road.
Johnny's road too.
Warden can squeeze more money out of a stone. They would, would they not be liable for part of the road cost? And I know we generally, from what I've seen, that we dedicate about forty percent of the cost of the construction goes towards road construction.
So, so through, through the chair on that, uh, if the, the county was planning to do some, um, reconstruction work through there at, at, at the time of, of our project, uh, they, they would certainly be contributing. However, if they, if they don't have any forecasted plans to, to, to do that and we're, uh, tearing up, uh, their, uh, road, the, the, the feeling is that they would be, uh, that we would be responsible for, for, for that portion of the, uh, of the reinstatement.
And if I can just, I, you know, I made the, I made the comment, I, I wasn't being facetious when I say the county is broke. But I, I just to, to put back on the table again of what the county is looking at. The county has basically committed themselves to twenty-seven million dollars for County Road Forty-three. Now, we know that, uh, we're gonna get, we're gonna get part of that federal provincial grant, which is going to finance nine million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand and ninety-nine dollars of it. Now, that nine hundred, that, um, that nine million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars isn't all federal and provincial money. There's a, a municipal component in there from North Grenville and there's a compa, a county component in there. But that ten million is only the first ten million of twenty-seven million and we've committed that we're gonna do that project. Now additionally, we're gonna be committing ourselves to about, and I get to, keep getting this number all the way wrong because it's so large, a monstrous amount of debt for Mapleview Lodge. And it's going to be a big debt and it's probably gonna be a thirty-year debt. And the way that those projects are financed is as follows. The county expens, expends the money and incurs the loan and the province pays us back so much per bid, per night, each year. And that money partially services that debt, but only services about a third of the annual debt cost. So it's a big hit to the actual county taxpayer, a big hit. So, you know, when I say that the county is broke, I'm saying that they're moving into two major construction, uh, major construction programs, the biggest of which they've ever undertaken. The twenty road, the twenty-seven million on County Road Forty-three will be the largest ever county road project and the Mapleview Lodge project will be by far the largest single project ever.
How do you prepare, prepare for St. Lawrence Lodge when they go there?
Yes, but St. Lawrence Lodge was a kind of a different cat because, uh, to some extent, Brockville, Prescott and Ganonakway are involved. They're, they will also be involved in Mapleview Lodge. I grant you that. Uh, and so the portion that comes down to the local taxpayer after the provincial portion comes in will be distributed amongst all thirteen municipalities, but our share will be heavy. It will be far in excess of what we're paying right now. Better remember, St. Lawrence Lodge is not paid for yet. Uh, that, that debt has not been retired. And Mapleview Lodge, the last major reconstruction at Mapleview Lodge, still has not been retired and it will not be retired until twenty-twenty-two. So we're still paying big capital, uh, to, to Mapleview Lodge, the recon, the, the last reconstruction of Mapleview Lodge.
Anyway, uh, on the whole project, I, I think we gotta, we gotta bite the bullet here and do something. I, I agree that we put it off and hopefully we're not gonna have a major failure here. But I think staff, that's a great idea. And you say we gotta relabel here, but I think we gotta break it down into five projects. I think next year we gotta get started on.
On one of them.
On one of them. Let staff decide which is our public works operator decide on what's the most critical one. Where the one, uh, section that we've had the most breaks in and we've got the most rubber patches on down, down there to go. And I think we gotta start on.
So there's a, uh, that's a, that's a version of, that's a version, or actually you could say it's actually a pickup. that's a version, or actually, you could say it's actually a pickup on, well, it's a pickup on two, really, yeah. So, I'm, I'm just looking around the table to see, and maybe I better let the CIO jump in here. Would you pick up on Counselor Hunter's concept there? Pick the worst, pick the worst section, give it a label, and tell us where it is and roughly what you think it would be?
Well, thank, uh, thank you, Mayor. And, and that's, that's sort of what we're hoping to get out of the discussion tonight is, is, is number one, that, you know, whether we, whether we call it Project A, B, or, or label it something completely different, we, we, we need to look at this, this next six years as we're going to have to at least do some sections of County Road Two. We, we certainly can't afford on, on our own to, to, to do the entire project. So, we're probably looking at, from the Hydro Substation on heading west at, at, at Cardinal, east to, I would say, just east of Dishaw Street, as by far the, the, the worst sections that have the, the majority of breaks. So, we would prob, we would probably look at developing that water financial plan that would include that section being done o, o, over the next several years.
Now, with that section, that would be right down the parking lane of County Road Two?
Ye, yes, it would.
Open cut?
Ye, ye, yes, it, yes, it would.
Sidewalk replacement, too?
Uh, yes, yes, the sidewalk would need to be replaced because there, there's no way that we could do an open cut without actually ripping out the sidewalk.
Line's pretty narrow.
It is pretty, it is pretty close, so.
How much of the total project would that measure, Russell?
That, that, that's something that we would have to, that, that we would have to follow up on. One, one of the nice advantages of, of a project of, you know, that, that span was two kilometer, is that we probably get a little bit of pricing. When, when we chump it down a little bit, it's, i, it's probably going to be a little bit more, but I think, I think that's the better way to go. I think it's, it's more manageable for, for the users on the system.
Yeah.
And if you weigh that against the interest costs that would be added if you did the whole project at once, maybe it wouldn't be so bad.
Well.
Is there some way of, well, we, maybe you can't answer this right now, but is there some way of following Mayor's suggestion of wording, or whatever you want to call it, project name, in such a way that you can program them so that the contractor doesn't have to have additional mobile demo costs? I mean, that's where, if you get it into small portions, you're going to pay a lot on more on the mobilization and demobilization aspects. Because once they're cutting into the road and doing the work on that, it's going to be much the same on a per meter or per kilometer basis. But, um, so if it can be staged in such a way that they're all different names, but he's, he moves from the completion of one into the start of another.
So, so ju, so just to speak to that, what the, what, what our last few applications have sort of indicated is that year one would be updating and finalizing some, some of that engineering and giving a little more, a, a, a little more up-to-date data with respect to that, and then proceeding to that project. So, the, the water financial plan would probably look at 2021 to, to do some engineering and with, with the anticipation to be in construction on, in, in 2022, 2023, to, to, to do that particular phase. Or project, we'll, we'll, we'll find, we'll, we'll fine-tune the wording, but yes. So if the engineering goes forward in 2021, and there happens to be another grant application, yeah, let's, you know, let, let's put in for it. Maybe we're successful, and we, 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 we have that engineering updated.
Yeah.
That's not covered.
And staff is, feels that that's the worst of, that's the worst section out of the whole section?
That is the worst section out of the, of the entire section.
Dave, when you say Dishaw now, is that one street over from the Nine Mile East? Or, I know where you're talking with the election.
So, so ac, ac, actually directly in front of the library would be, would be, would be kind of that stop point. So from, so from there west, is, is by far the worst, worst section. And the mo, the most challenging, because that's, that though, with the Dishaw Street and with Shamley Road, tho, tho, those are, those are the two locations where north and south sort of meet. That's the, that, that's where the water transitions, north and south. So one of the things that the original plan didn't have was, was a third line crossing at Walker Street. And I, I, I think from a, from a long-range perspective is to update that engineering to include a third line across Walker Street. So you, so, so you have further contingencies.
Okay, so are we getting, do I sense that we're getting consensus around sort of heading in that direction? Can we, can we, do we have enough consensus that staff can sort of start working in that direction? That's the first thing. I like, I just like a nodding of heads or a showing of hands. I think I'm getting that, okay, all right. Now.
He hasn't spoken yet.
You want a last word, but I'm not, I haven't asked the last question.
Carry on. I'm waiting here very peep. Just have to get your wallet.
Well, an integral part of that is that we would institute some sort of a capital levy at some point to add to the reserves. Now, we've just had a, another look at our reserve accounts tonight. So if you go back to that sheet that the Treasurer provided you, uh, uh, that showed the reserve in the reserve accounts, well, that's on page sixty-five of seventy-eight. And I'd get the Treasurer to help me out here if she would. But I see the accounts as being thirty-eight oh six, no, no, that's wrong, thirty-eight oh eight Cardinal wastewater. And I see a balance in that account of, on, on June the thirtieth of, no, that's not right. On the first of January 2020, the first of this year, the balance in that account was two hundred and seventy thousand. And then, in the water account, thirty-eight one one, the balance in that account was five hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So between those two accounts, we have about eight thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so the purpose of the levy would be to build on those accounts. Now, you can see that the Treasurer plans to add about two thousand in interest in the wastewater side, and about four thousand in interest on the water side. So you can see the numbers that she hopes to achieve at December the thirty-first, 2020, in the far-right column. No? Go ahead, correct me.
Okay, so the far-right column is the balances of June thirtieth. We will still incur in, interest earned in that bank account till the end of December. And the other thing potentially in both those systems is that we have transfers to reserves built into the budget, but we don't do those, those reserve transfers until after all the dust settles at the end of the year, and we see what kind of surplus or deficit.
Good correction. So, so my interests are as of June thirtieth?
As of June thirtieth.
Yes, and the, and the far-right is as of June thirtieth.
Yeah, and the water system, I do remember that I think budget-wise, we have, hopefully, budgeting a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars to be transferred in.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you can see last year we had transferred eighty-four. And in the water syst, wastewater system, we transferred thirty-two. So, you know, if there's, if there's some surplus in both those systems that can go in as well, though, between the surpluses and the interest, there, there could be, you know, quite a bit more money.
Yeah, and on the other hand, though, if we have a break in the system at any place, that's going to reduce the amount available to transfer in. Right. Okay, so that gives you a kind of an idea. So, you know, another levy, even at five dollars a month on top of that, would be a significant contribution. So, Counselor Cameron wanted the last word. Because he's the only payer on the system, but I just want you to know, sir.
Our, our, our CIO also, you know, pays him, too.
But, but I just want you to know that every time I appear in your fine community for coffee, it's your water that I'm drinking.
That, that, and it's fine water, too, isn't it?
I know, I water it down with coffee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I just want to say that the work has to be done, and we have to find the money somewhere. That's, that's the top line. But I also would like to point out that the, the, the users of water, now, I, I only use about somewhere between four cubic meters a month, somewhere around there. Some maybe a little higher, some, but usually not any lower, maybe three, but anyway. We're already paying almost sixty dollars in service charges already every month. Water is cheap, there's no, no question about it. It's the, it's, it's the service charges that, that are killing us. Another five dollars a month, I don't think anybody would complain about that. So that being said, however, one of the fair ways to do it is to make sure that everybody that uses water pays for these, for these, for these repairs. I'd like to point out that, for instance, on our water meter system, there are apartment buildings which have one water meter, and the bill is split up by the owner. So if you were going to charge per unit by water meter, like say five dollars per water meter or per billing, uh, that's not fair, because two forty Allen Street has, I'm going to say, forty users and one water meter. The same with the, the same with the apartment buildings in and around, in and around Cardinal. So if you're going to make this fair for all as, as, as a user-based system, all the users have to, have to pay. So we have to somehow figure out how that, how that works out. There's about a hundred, or there's about seven hundred and fifteen bills go out every month. So that's, that's what I'm saying. As opposed to approximately seven hundred and ninety-six users, which takes into consideration the apartment buildings, two forty Allen Street, et cetera, et cetera. And then there are, of course, a couple of people that do not have water meters. So, however, they are being built, so we have, we have to come up with a, with a, a system there. So, that means that you know what the situation is there. I would like to make sure that when the, when the, um, when the repairs are finished, County Road Two is in pristine condition again, that there are, that levy goes away. Because I don't think if we are imposing a levy to fix County Road Twenty-two, or County Road Two, after County Road Two is done, I, I'd like to see that levy go away. So that's, that's just my, my examples. And I agree, the work has to be done, we have to find the money. It's got to come from somewhere. And unless my big numbers roll up, where's it going to come from? So, however, I would like to see the recommendation hold off until we try and get some information back as to why we didn't get our, our grant. I'd like to see that just deferred for a while. And that's my, that's my ninety-two cents.
No, it's five dollars.
Well, five dollars, yeah, okay. I mean, even at five dollars, it's going to, you know, I mean, gosh, it's going to take a long time to get, a long, long time to get that money.
Well, it's on top, it's on top of what we're already doing. CIO wanted.
So ju, just, just to speak to, to, to Counselor Cameron, on, on a couple of points that, I, I, I believe if, if you were looking at instituting capital levy, it would, it wouldn't be like, it would be very similar to how we, we do it, we, we go by units. So if there were ten units in, in apartment building, it would be five times ten.
Oh, okay, yeah. We would just incorporate onto that bill?
That, that, that's, that's correct.
And, and that's what I was, and that's what I was thinking about, yes.
So that's manageable?
Sorry?
That's, that's, that's a doable situation within our existing billing system?
That is correct, that is correct. Just, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily indicate that we're just putting in a capital levy for County Road Two. I think if, if you go forward with that capital levy, I think it probably is something that's going to always need, need to remain in, in some way, shape, or form, because our, our, our other infrastructure will decline.
Well, we've got to eventually get to Sawmill Creek.
Correct, correct. It, it, it's a, it's a long journey.
Yes, it's a long road down there.
Further would be fine, too.
Yeah.
We've got to eventually get to our one, one percent infrastructure capital tax.
Yeah, yeah, well, you're right. But got to remember that, that we cannot, we cannot collect from the guys on, outside the system. We can't, we cannot.
Why not? Why not, Mr. Mayor?
No, because, because the, the legislation is clear. These systems have to be paid for by the users of the system.
The system does, but the road is going to be redone, and we all use the road.
Well, but again, in that situation, it's a county road. Now, picking up on the way that the CIO is talking, if, if we picked that section between the library and the Hydro Station, and we, and we provided sufficient notice to, to county that that was going to be a 2022 project, there might be some possibility that that would get put into a 2022 budget. We'll have a new Director of Public Works within the next six months. Mr. Arup is re, is retiring at the end of August. And then, and of course, we're going to have a new Director, and he's going to have to have a complete look at how his whole projects are going together. But I think mostly in a, in a situation like that, where we're asking them to pick up their lane, I think it's a doable thing with enough advanced notice.
But also, why not the taxpayers' portion come from the general tax levy?
That's where it would come from.
For the, for EC, right? For, for the Cardinal? Or for the county? Come from the county?
No, no, it would come from the county.
So the county would tax the.
Increase their request from us.
And the other reason.
Well, the engineers, when the engineers do the engineering, they tell us, it's this much for this pipe, it's this much for this pipe, and it's this much for the, for the roadwork, and it's this much for the sidewalk work. Okay, well, I think we have kind of the beginning of a plan. Did you want to push us a little bit further?
Well, ju, just, we're, we're developing our first draft of the, of the water financial plan to bring forward in August. We, we, we are required to submit by November. And I, I understand that we, that if we can obtain a meeting and, and, and get some additional, you know, information on, on maybe where, where we can strengthen the application, if we can, is, is valuable. But I think that for our first draft of the, of the water financial plan, we, we, we would like to kind of proceed with, with it in, in, in sort of sections. Projects, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out some, some, some better wording with respect to that, and look at incorporating sort of a, a, a five-dollar capital levy in, in, in working through that plan.
And that'll be first draft?
That will be first draft to come back in August.
Okay.
When they, we submit that request for funding, we include our consolidated financials, right? So the fact of the port being added in there, is that causing this problem?
We don't think so, not anymore now that the port has just shown us one line item in the financials, yeah.
I, I, I would say potentially in our first couple of applications, it may have, it may, it may have played a factor. But, but I would say in the last three to four.
Well, the only point I have to make is that if you look at our total financials, like I'm the guy up there, okay, making this, all this application. And I look at your total financial, and say, why the hell can't these guys do this? Probably borrow some money and do it. I mean, they, look at the financials they've got, they're pretty good. Like, we think we're strangled here, okay? But if you look at the total bottom line, we've got pretty good. good financial picture. What do you think about that?
So when you come down to it, what it amounts to is entities such as the Township of Edersburg Cardinal, that have been extremely well conservatively managed over their history, are in effect penalized from the characters that spent wildly.
You know, Mr. Mayor, the first order of business is you keep two cents of books.
Now, Mr. Bradley, where would you ever bought that concept? Look at what you've done, look at what you've done to the treasurer.
I think one thing along the way in our application is, I think ministries are taken, not taken into consideration is their unruly law, as you state, that the users have to pay for their system, and they're taking into account the financial aspects of the township that has nothing to do with the financial aspect of the system to support itself.
And you know, that's the one point that I was using when I was trying to get meetings with the people that were making the decisions. I said, I've gotta somehow get across to them that the township's financial statements don't mean anything. The point is that this is a robust system, made even robust, more robust by Walkerton, the results of Walkerton, that has to be financed on the backs of seven hundred and fifteen users. That's the point that we've got to get across. But we didn't get that opportunity, and maybe we'll get it the next round. Never know. Okay, I'm gonna wind this up and get moving on here because it is nine o'clock. And I'm gonna move to number eight, which is council inquiries, notices, motion. And I had a number of people signify that they wanted to talk. So Counselor Cameron first.
Okay, I'd just like to bring it to staff's attention that on Legion Way, just west of the canteen, there is a stand, a long stand of, I believe it's six oak trees. Three of them did not come back this year. And then also, if you look over towards the waterfront, there are two more trees that did not come back this year. Could we have an arborist or someone look at these, find out if they're diseased, and if they are, get them down so the others don't become infected, and then perhaps plant for every tree we take out, plant two down there. That's just, that's just something that was brought to my attention. Also, I've had some complaints about the boat ramp, where people are backing their boat trailers in, and there's quite a bump when they reach the end of the concrete and it drops down. And one person had been spinning tires to get out. He finally did get out, but he brought it to my attention. So to start with, can we get a load of gravel dumped in there, please? And then perhaps our recreation staff could have a look at the entire boat ramp to maybe come up with some way of repaving that boat ramp. There are also other complaints about the width of the new docks. They're less, I know they're twenty-four feet across, but they're not what they used to be. They're not, and that is causing, I'm gonna say, a minor, minor problem. And it has to do with people backing trailers up. Some are good and some aren't. So there's just not a lot of room in there like there used to be, if that could be...
That's the width of the ramp.
The width of the ramp, that is correct, yeah. And there is room for about four feet to pick up there. I think that would make a great improvement for next year, but the gravel is certainly a must. There's quite a drop-off there. And I've even, over the last couple of days, watched boats come in, and it is, it is hard. No question about it. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I've covered the trees, and I've covered the boat ramp. Thank you.
Any other notices, motions, inquiries? Counselor Dillibon?
I have a couple. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, up at which is the point where we're saying that the people were swimming, the children are swimming, I'm hoping that maybe there's a little bit of money left over from the wreck to put a couple loads of nice sand up there for the beach to add on to. It's pretty yucky right now. I think a couple loads of sands, a couple loads, really, we can spit it out there. Seeing everybody's using it, and there's a lot of kids using it, if we could. I have one other thing, too, Mr. Mayor. If we could get maybe the C A O and the treasurer to look into it with our insurance B F L. I'd like to know if we can get all of our expenses that we lost from Rena being closed and the pool, and go to them and ask them if we have any business interruption coverage under the COVID-19. I sure like to make a phone call to them and ask them. Because I think we may have a case there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else got anything under notices, Counselor Hunter?
I have, I'm sure we're all aware, we had a fire transfer site. I was in there afterwards looking at it. Previous council, we started a process of relocating and building a new transfer site on the northwest side of the road there. We had plans drew up for it. I think we still have money set aside in the budget for, that we didn't use, still in reserve for the transfer site. I'd like to see this brought back on to our, into our budget for 2021 to relook it, build the new transfer site there. It'll cost some money, but if we're lucky this time, the fire, our excellent fire department got put out pretty quickly there. But that is very crowded and a very poor, in my opinion, laid-out place to try to do a transfer site in there. If that fire had got going a little bit longer and never got down, burnt down through the top, and got able to dump underneath there, we could have been in a major environmental impact there and a major cost to the township to clean that up and get out of it. I don't know whether we've heard back from M O E over the fire yet there or not. I'm sure we'd like to, we'll be hearing something from them out very often. There were a tire fire that you don't hear something from. So I think we need to get this back on the dock and get a proper transfer site open to township, so.
So to the C A O, first of all, have we heard any follow-up from M O E?
Mr. Chair, I've had, I've had one or two conversations with the, or email exchange with the abatement officer, but just with respect to, just with respect to our actions on cleanup. That's the extent we've had.
So then, speaking of the second issue, we did have, you're right, we did have plans for a new site and the development of a new site. And we, and I think that was in the previous term of council that was brought forward. And when we compared basically the cost of opening and develop, and just getting a new site opened and developed, developed and opened, and then compared that with just continuing to operate where we were, and Ministry of the Environment gave us authorization to continue to operate where we were as a transfer site. So when you compared the two costs, it was like night and day, and that's why we decided to stay. But maybe we can ask the C A O if he could resurrect those old plans and see if those numbers are still valid comparators.
I know there's, there is a number, and there isn't a comparison as far as costs with what you're getting for your value, for your money. To, there's no way, in my opinion, you can consider where we are now as a long-term situation to remain there as a transfer site. It's just, it just didn't room accommodations there to keep us using that as a transfer site. And even as we're arguing with the transfer site that now, it needs some money spent on there to improve and get it cleaned up in there and proper signings and stuff coming in. I went down the other day, I haven't been down for a long time, because some of my family takes it down all the time. But there isn't even proper signings for somebody coming in, which way you're supposed to go. You come into the road, and there's two roads going, and local ones know you go to the left and walk around. But anybody coming in, getting new to the township, when you go down the road, which way do you generally go? Generally go right, you don't go left. So...
True. It's all the staff there, though. Well, not at the bottom of the hill.
Not at the bottom of the hill. There's nothing to show you which way. When you come in that gate, there's a road here and a road there. Nothing, you can't even see where the transfer site is.
Okay, so, points made. Are there any other things to be brought up under notices of motion? Hearing none, I'm about to move on. And so I'm at number nine. And I got a fair number of things I wanna talk to council about. The first of which is this. I'm assuming that everybody has read the Recorder in Times edition of July third, where they're talking about the Township of Augusta met with S L X, a residential attraction company that's pitching all of the townships to get into business with them and pay them to bring new residences into your township. I think you're talking about four thousand dollars for each family that they managed to bring in. And the reason I'm bringing it up is this. S L X, which is Dave Beatty, Brett Todd, Mike Voll, Adam Crick, and James Wilson, those three are asking for, they wanna meet with all, the councils of all ten townships. And I'm bringing it up here because I wanna know whether this council is interested in meeting with them. I don't wanna leave it up to the clerk to grant them a delegation just because they request one. So I want some feedback, just to see where individuals stand here. We all know the basic concept, at least I think we do. If anybody doesn't, we can explore it a little bit further.
So they're going to find people to move to our township?
Well, they're billing themselves as a marketing company that is marketing our area to places, not just Ottawa, but Ottawa, Kingston, Toronto area, with a view to attracting workers, young family workers, to this area. And if they can attract a worker to your area to buy a house, then you pay them four thousand dollars. So I just need to get some feeling here, and I think the staff needs to have some direction.
So they'd like to...
I don't mind starting first on this one.
May I?
I don't mind starting first on this one. You can talk to pretty near any realtor that works, sells houses in this township, and they've all got a waiting list to buy places, people wanting to move into this township. I think that's the last thing we need to do, is pay anybody to try to encourage people to move to our township. I think we can't supply enough houses fast enough, most of the ones that wanna move here, so...
Well, and, you know, I'd just like to know if there's other people that feel the same way, because if there is, then we don't need to meet with them. You're nodding your head.
How could they prove that they attracted them anyway?
I'm not getting into the details here because I haven't talked to them.
No interest.
No interest.
No interest.
No interest.
No interest.
The other? That's fine.
I think this latest building report speaks volumes.
I do, yes. No sense in wasting their time either.
I would say in an effort for, you know, regional discussions and out of respect to Mr. Beatty, if he wants to make a presentation or have a delegation to us, I have no problem with that. But ultimately, I'm not interested in what they're selling.
How do you put that here?
Well, if you request a delegation, why not?
Well, the problem is, it's always Michael Adamcrick that requests the delegation. And then it's Mr. Beatty that comes and gives it credibility. Well, you've heard, the staff has heard the discussion. I'm just gonna let it go at that, because I do wanna report a little bit further. So the meeting of the St. Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission was held last Wednesday, I think it was. And again, you know, I mean, the commissioner referred to several different initiatives that he's got underway. It turns out that the big initiative that they had going for a big company to take a big position at the maitland works, they had an option on the land. That company has, first of all, extended the option, and then finally given up the option and walked away. And so that initiative is off the table, and that initiative involved three different companies. That's off the table. He did talk about, and he did call me about a company that was looking for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot freezer-type warehouse, cold storage warehouse. I told him that we didn't have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot cold storage warehouse, but that we had somebody that was in the business of developing warehouses, and that, that individual, I didn't use any names, and that that individual had options on fifty to sixty acres of land where such a warehouse could be built. He promised to get back to me, didn't get back to me, then told me that the people that he was talking to by, from C B R E, were coming to look at the Procter and Gamble warehouse. And when I asked him at the meeting, well, what were they looking for in terms of height? He said, well, they wanted eighteen-foot ceilings. Well, I questioned that, because when we're talking to Giant Tiger, Giant Tiger made it clear, it was a no-starter until they, unless they could get us to do an amendment to our zoning bylaw to give them sixty-foot ceilings. Because warehouses wanna go up, they don't wanna go out. They wanna go up. So I really questioned the fact that he had a client that would be looking for a warehouse with eighteen-foot ceilings. But I let that go. And then he came back with another client who was looking for fifty to sixty acres close to a 401 interchange. And I said, well, I'd like to have that as a lead. I mean, if you've got that kind of a prospect and it's a lead, we have got fifty to sixty acres. I'm thinking about our developer, you know who he is. He does have an option on fifty to sixty acres, very close to the 401 interchange. So I'd like to have the contacts, I'd like to be able to pitch that prospect. He promised me at the meeting, Counselor Cameron audited the meeting, promised me at the meeting that he would get that contact to me. Friday afternoon, I sent him an email. I said, I've got a meeting Monday afternoon, I'd like to be able to tell my council that I've got a prospect that I'm working on. And that, by the way, would be the first lead that we've ever had from this commission, and no answer today. So I don't know, you know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just at my wit's end. Wanna talk about something positive? We're in, I'm in discussion with the principals of another company that has a large storage tank at the port, not gonna use the name here right now in public. They're interested in a piece of land that we own at the corner of Edison Drive and County Road Two. You all know the piece of land that I'm talking about. We bought, just bought a piece from a third party to consolidate our holdings. We have pitched them on a two-acre site, which incorporates all of our holdings, plus a piece of land, a small piece of land that we would have to purchase from Prisbyan. They're very excited about it. They've taken our drawings, they've worked with our drawings to lay out how they would use the two acres, two-point-four-seven acres, one hectare. They've worked with that, and I talked to the principal on Thursday, and he's very interested. So he promises me that we will get a call from their lawyer sometime within the next week or so, because they will, and I explained to him, you guys gotta make the first offer, because we're not going to... Because we're not going to use up a budget goodwill with a large industrial manufacturer and ask him for a piece of land until we know that you're serious. So show us you're serious, give us an offer, and then we'll start the process. So that's underway. I want to talk just a little bit about the official opening or a grand opening at ELC Automotive Sales at nineteen-twenty-one County Road Two. I've been talking to Herb Gooding there about a ribbon cutting of some sort, hoping to invite, Herb won't give me a date, I need to try to get dates from the MP and the MPP and we'll see if we can get something organized there. And similarly, I've been talking to John Mulder about a ribbon cutting at his establishment, but he prefers to wait until his signage is up and his pavement is done. So that's, both those are in the works. Had another chat today with our contact at Enbridge Gas. Confirmed today with that contact that Enbridge Gas has definitely forwarded our complete file or the complete file on our project to the Ontario Energy Board along with the hundred-and-sixty-some letters of interest, expressions of interest that we collected. And the entire file now rests with the Ontario Energy Board. And the Ontario Energy Board is to make their recommendations to the minister. New date now, by October the thirty-first. And I have one last thing. And that is, we talked earlier tonight about the paving project that we're going to do on Vender Road and Stafford Road and Blair Road South. And we know we took Hudson Crescent off the project. But I see that our staff has lifted about two-thirds of the pavement on Hudson Crescent. At both ends, so they've started at each, at County Road, or Blair Road South and they've removed pavement about two-thirds of the way around. Now, I'm assuming that they've done that because they're going to use up all of the, they want to use up as much of the money as available as possible. And I asked the CIO today if he could give me an idea of what it would cost to complete the Crescent on Hudson Crescent. And I think the number that he gave me was forty-five thousand dollars. So I'm just floating a balloon, does county, does the council want to go forty-five thousand dollars above what's committed and finish Hudson Crescent? I don't know that we have to make the decision tonight because I don't know when the paving starts. Do you have an idea when the paving starts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They are anticipating to start Ventnor on Wednesday and potentially over to Stafford by Friday or early next week. So my thought is that Blair Road would be done sometime next week.
Or the week, next week or the week, oh, yeah. So again, I'm just putting it up. I would invite all members of council to go take a look at Hudson Crescent. You can see where the pavement's been removed. If we do the sections, the two sections that they've got finished, it's going to leave an unfinished section right in the middle of the Crescent. So forty-five thousand, roughly, estimate forty-five thousand finishes the Crescent and we can move on. So that's my report and I don't have anything more there. I'm going to leave that hanging. And item number ten on the agenda is a question period. I don't see if we have anybody here. Item number eleven is a closed session, I wouldn't dare introduce a closed session now. And item twelve is adjournment, does somebody have the motion to adjourn?
So?
Okay, moved by Councilor Cameron, goes in favor, seconded by Deputy Mayor, those in favor. Motion is carried, I see the clock at nine-twenty-five.